Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the March 14th, 2022 Planning Commission Meeting. Recommendations from the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at the regular meeting on April 5th, 2022, at 10:30 a.m. Note that the Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms, which are available in the commission chambers during the meeting. They're located in back on the back table there. If you are not the agent or the applicant for an item, I would ask that you fill those out and hand them in over down here at the clear box. We'll pick them up and carry them forward with the meeting. First item is roll call. Note that everyone is here. First item on the agenda number one, approval of the February 28th, 2022 minutes. Are there any changes or corrections for the minutes? Noting none, is there a motion for approval?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second for approval for the discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Second item is approval of today's agenda. Today's agenda consists of the consent agenda, items three and four, followed by normal commission items five through 15, and our end of meeting items 16 through 19. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I've got a question on four.
To poll from the consent agenda? Okay, we'll carry that when we go bring come to the consent agenda. Are there any others? If none, I would entertain a motion for approval of today's agenda.
So move.
Motion and second for approval of today's agenda for their discussion. Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Today's consent agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Malater, Planning Director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this planning commission on certain items from this agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners, who will make the final decision. Item number three is Conditional Use Permit Review, CU 1040, for Jane Hayne Bilka, to review home occupation in an accessory structure in agriculture district. The staff is recommending approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit, CU 1040, with conditions. Item number four is Major Plan Unit Development Amendment Review, CU 1709, for Big Horn Canyon Ministries, Inc., to review a church place of worship in a planned unit development district. The staff is recommending approval of the extension of Major Plan Unit Development Amendment, PU 1709, with conditions.
Thank you. Are there any that staff wishes to pull from the agenda?
No, not at this time.
You want number four polled? Okay. Are there any? Number three, anybody? For those folks in the audience, today's consent agenda normally consists of a few more items, but today we just have item three and number four. Number four will be polled for a separate consideration. Does anyone have any concerns with item number three before we vote on that? Noting none. Staff's recommendation is for approval of the consent agenda, which only consists of item number three. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion and second for approval of consent agenda, item number three. Further discussion. Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Run item four.
Good morning, Commissioners. Madison Ransome. Did you want me to go through the whole?
No, I just have one question. In looking at the pictures of this thing up and down and all over the place, it's a big place. Are there sleeping facilities there? Do people stay overnight at all?
No.
None at all?
Not that there's allowed in this PUD that we're aware of.
That's why I was curious. Okay, that's the only thing I had. Other than that, I have no problem.
Further questions on item four? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on item number four? Hearing none and seeing none, staff's recommendation is for approval of Major Plan Unit Development Amendment, PU 17-09. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion and second for approval for the discussion. Hearing none, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Run item five.
Cody Sack, Environmental Planner. Item five is Layout Plan LPL 22-05. It is to subdivide and create lots 13C and 13D of Battle Creek Mountain Estate subdivision. The applicant and landowner is Deborah Pimental. The location of the property is at 13685 West Battle Creek Road. Involves 3.05 acres. Current land use is residential with an existing zoning of rural residential district. There is no special flood hazard area on the property. Currently, as the property sits, there's a single-family residence. Now that was built in 2006, that has a proper building permit and an onsite wastewater treatment system. That was also installed in 2006. For the proposed lots, lot 13C will be 3.05 acres. It will contain the single-family residence and the septic system. And lot 13D will be vacant and will be 3.05 acres. This was rather out for interdepartmental review. There were no major comments or concerns that were received. I believe Highway wants a second approach or that they need approach permits. The applicants are splitting the lots to sell one. Rezone or comprehensive plan amendment is not required as the proposed lots are over three acres and the current zoning is rural residential. The applicants will need to dedicate or improve the section line right-of-way and provide percolation soil profile information, or request a subdivision regulation variance to waive these requirements. Staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's requests as it appears to be in harmony with existing lots and land uses in the area. So with that, staff is recommending approval of layout plan LPL 22-05 with conditions.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Go ahead.
What is the notch in 13C? Is there something there?
That I'm not sure of. That was previously plotted and I guess I didn't really research why that notch was there or not.
Yeah, I was just curious if there was something there from the other lot that was on it or what? I didn't know.
If you want to answer the question, I would have you come up and talk at the dais instead of from the gallery. Do you want to come up?
I don't know if the notch is.
Okay. Come on up.
I was curious. What is your name, sir?
John Pimentel.
Okay, John. What is that notch in 13C? Is there something there?
That's our road going down, yeah. Off of Battle Creek Road?
Off of Highway 40.
Yeah, in 13C, that little notch right there.
That's an easement for the drainage under the highway.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's all that is.
Very good. I was just curious. Thank you.
Further questions? Does anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in, excuse me, staff recommends approval of layout plan LPL 22-05 with six conditions.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second for approval for the discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item six.
Madison Ransome, Environmental Planner. Agenda item number six is Conditional Use Permit, CU 2206, to allow gunsmithing business on the property. The applicant and landowner is Kent and Cam Dacey. The location is 23607 Tigerville Road. The size of the property is 5.23 acres. Currently zoned rural residential district, and there's no special flood hazard on the property. The zoning ordinance lists seven criteria that the Planning Commission may consider in the review of the Conditional Use Permit applications. They are up on the screen and I will read the findings. Number one, the requested use should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public, considering home occupations take place entirely within a structure on the property. Number two, yes, this Conditional Use Permit should not change the residential use of the property and thus should not have any long-term negative effects on the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity. Three, yes, the requested use should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of any surrounding property in the area. Four, yes, access is off Tigerville Road. There's an existing onsite wastewater treatment system on the property. Five, yes, the requested use should not significantly impact traffic congestion. Six, yes, the property is zoned rural residential district. Home occupations are allowed in this district with a Conditional Use Permit. Seven is, yes, the future land use of the property is rural residential district, which allows for single-family residents as a primary use. Home occupations are secondary use that is allowed through Conditional Use Permit. There's currently a single-family residence with an attached garage, an additional garage, a horse barn, and three additional sheds on the property. This request was routed to county for interdepartmental review. Emergency services did comment there needs to be an address posted at the end of the driveway and on each addressed structure. Whatever building will house that business, it should have a separate address from the house due to its contents of the building. Staff has added this as a condition of approval. On March 4th, staff performed a site visit and found that all structures on the property have a current permit and appear to meet setbacks. The applicant's intent is to create blank ammunition. The applicant will not have any employees and will be shipping the blank ammunition to the customers. Staff has not received any complaints regarding this request. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of Conditional Use Permit, CU 2206, with conditions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff on this item?
Mr. Chair, just one small. Madison, do you keep like a tickler file? For instance, the written notice from the Hill City Fire Department I see is a condition. Do you, some way so that you know that that's coming in if we approve this today?
Um, I guess I'm not really understanding your question. Can you say that one more?
In other words, how do you keep track of, since we're approving it without the notice to the Hill City Fire Department, how do you keep track of that that's one of the items that has to be in the file before he opens up?
So when we review it, we verify that that was sent.
Okay, so you do review it before you, okay. That's all I'm asking because it's not in file right now. That's what I was getting.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Janelle.
Madison, gunpowder. How much is being stored? What kind of fire control and what kind of security do we have on this?
I'm going to turn that over to the applicant if they're in the audience.
If you could state your name, sir.
Kent Dacey.
Good morning.
To answer your question.
Yes, please.
The ATF allows me 50 pounds of powder. And it is locked up in a powder magazine. It's an aluminum box with certified locks on it.
And the 50 pound would be in a metal container?
Yeah. It's individually one-pound bottles, one-pound cans.
Okay. And it's all kept in this aluminum?
Yep.
Thing, okay. That was the main thing I was curious about. Thank you.
Further questions? I don't think there's any further questions, sir. Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, staff is recommending approval of Conditional Use Permit, CU 22-06, with 14 conditions. Is there a motion?
So move.
Go ahead.
I move approval of CU 22-06.
Second.
Motion and second for approval for their discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item seven.
Agenda item number seven is Layout Plan LPL 22-06. To reconfigure lot lines to create lot BR of lot one and lot CR of lot one of Battle Creek Mountain Estate subdivision. The applicant and owner is Alan and Becky Knutson and Karen Fizekka. The agent is DC Scott Surveyors. Location is 24355 and 24363 Pretty Flower Lane. The size of the properties are 9.34 acres and 4.1 acres. Is currently zoned rural residential district, and there's no special flood hazard on the properties. Currently on the property, a tax ID 46494, is a double-wide manufactured home and two garages. And on tax ID 48028 is a mobile home and one detached garage. Proposed lot BR of lot one is, will be 6.01 acres with a double-wide and a two-dash garage. And proposed lot CR of lot one will be 8.10 acres with the mobile home and the single detached garage. The request was routed for interdepartmental review. County Highway Department did comment turnaround dimensions must meet dimensions as shown in Figure 1 of subdivision regulations. And an access easement should be on file for parcel 48028 to cross through parcel 48029. These are addressed as a condition of approval. The applicant is requesting to reconfigure lot lines to purchase a portion of the property to the north. Staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's requests as it appears to be in harmony with existing land uses in the area. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of layout plan LPL 22-06 with conditions.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
I have one.
Go ahead.
You've got CR and BR. Which one is going north?
Lot BR is the property to the north.
Okay.
Chairman.
Go ahead.
So for the sub, the access easement should be filed on, on file for parcel 48028 to cross through parcel 4809, 029. Is that on record?
So the property, not yet, since this is just the layout plan. When they do do the preliminary plot, that will have to be on, filed with register of deeds, that access.
Okay. And there's going to be two separate things on, two separate dwellings on these properties?
Two separate what?
Dwellings?
Uh, yes. There are currently two separate dwellings and will remain two separate single-family residences on the property.
Are they related?
I think the two sisters are related.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Noting none, staff's recommendation is for approval of layout plan LPL 22-06 with 11 conditions. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion and second for approval. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item eight.
Cody Sack, Environmental Planner. Item eight is Comprehensive Plan Amendment, CA 22-02. They assume in the comprehensive plan to change the future land use from agriculture district to rural residential district. The applicant and landowner is Bruce and Sandra Rampelberg. The agent is KTM Design Solutions Incorporated. If there are any questions, Janelle is in the audience. The location of the property is at 13959 Neck Yoke Road. Involves 18.52 acres. Current zoning is agriculture district. Existing land use is residential. Access is off Neck Yoke Road and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. Pennington County zoning designation comparison. So the current zoning is agriculture and the future land use is agriculture, which requires a 10-acre lot size and maximum single-family residential density of 0.1. Setbacks are 25 feet from all property lines. Predominant land uses are agriculture and residential with utilities being private. The proposed zoning is rural residential, which has a minimum lot size of three acres, has a maximum density of one per, one dwelling per unit acre. Setbacks are also 25 feet from all property lines. Predominant land use is residential and utilities are also private. For surrounding zoning districts, zoning within one-half mile for current zoning, to the north, there's agriculture district. To the south, there's agriculture district. To the east, there's agriculture district. And to the west, there's agriculture district with rural residential. Future land use within a half mile is the same. And land uses within one-half mile, to the north are agriculture residential. To the south are agriculture and residential. To the east is agriculture and residential. And to the west is agriculture and residential. This was rather out for interdepartmental review. There were no major comments or concerns that were received. Future land use within the area identifies several parcels as rural residential district within half-mile of subject property. The applicants are proposing to subdivide the property into two lots. The property is within the planning jurisdiction of the city of Rapid City. The applicants also apply for rezone, RZ 22-02, to change, to change agriculture, to change the zoning from agriculture to rural residential district. Will be heard on the next agenda item. Staff finds no significant issues with that applicant's request as it appears to be in harmony with existing land uses within the area. So staff is recommending approval of Comprehensive Plan Amendment 22-02.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Seeing none, I do have two speaker request forms. The first one is from Annie Daniel.
Good morning. My name is Annie Daniel, and I first want to say that me being here has nothing to do with Bruce and Sandy. They have been amazing neighbors. We bought our house from them almost four and a half years ago, and they've been pure pleasure to live across the street from them. I reside at 13948 Larriett Road, which is directly across Neck Yoke from their property. My family and others have moved to the area because we and everyone that lives in the area wanted to live in the country and have invested hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not millions, to not live in the city. We're not going to move ever, but it will be taking away our dream if we start a trend of allowing many more people to reside in these hills. In 10 years, it will no longer be country living. Think of the traffic. In summer, the amount of bikers and tourists that go up Neck Yoke to Coyote Flats on this one tiny little road. And so, you know, my family does the highway litter pickup for Neck Yoke Road for two miles length, and the amount of liquor and beer bottles that we collect are appalling. And then if that gets multiplied with more houses and more population on my little street that my kids live on and drive on and take the bus on, it's going to be a pretty scary thought. So what would potential new homes do to the forest ecosystem in the area? If we set a precedent today of creating more rural residencies and more houses in the area, that's going to be more chances of fires. It's already the Black Hill Fire Protection District. There'll be more septic tanks, there'll be more people on the wells, et cetera. We have so many people who already attempt to hunt in their backyards in that area, and if, you know, more houses move in, there's going to be more people wanting to go get deer on their land. More and more and more people in the area are more and more problems. So please let all these more and more people go somewhere else, expand somewhere else, and protect our little community of Neck Yoke Valley and Coyote Flats and the precious Black Hills, and let them stay that the way that they are now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker request form I have is from Mike Mueller.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am currently the president of Neck Yoke Valley Road District, which starts at Marie Lane, follows all the way back to the end of Wallace Street. Julie's and my home is at the end of Wallace Street on one of those 10-acre parcels. And as was previously mentioned, we have enjoyed the sparsity out there. As you can see, the egg zoning surrounding that property, I can acknowledge that those yellows on limestone, that's a limited-length road, and only so many lots can be pulled off of that street. There are hundreds of acres around this property, and 34 and a half acres is for sale just north of Carstens and east of Roland Drive. And if this were a precedent set for a three-acre per home, and you divide that into hundreds of acres, it could be developed, there is a major impact to that with this precedent. So what I'd like to ask is, for strong consideration, even though, I don't know when those yellows were put in, knowing the fact that limestone road is very limited in, in capacity, you look at about a mile of gravel from Neck Yoke all the way to the end of Wallace Street, and I realize the best way to control land use is own the land, and that'd be great. It's not for sale at this point in time. We'd love to see it stay at 10 acres per home out there. There's still plenty of land to buy and have a nice lot and have a nice property. The three-acre precedent inside this circle will only make it grow. We would like to also impact, or I don't think the county's going to pick up this road back for maintenance. We invest, of course, our taxes. There are only four properties east of Wallace Street that are tied to this road district right now. So none of these properties around there have access to that for a home, so it does not give us funding for the road district. So in that respect, there's another cause for more maintenance and impacting Marie Lane, et cetera. So I just hope that the tax revenue that could be gained by all these lots, homes, and development is not a major factor in your decision on, on, on the revenue gained by building more homes. I would also like to ask that somebody check the math because the existing lot is 18.52 acres, and I think one of the reports I saw, this will be split to 9.11 and 9.12. So there's a quarter acre missing somewhere, unless there's some kind of a road going in off the side from Marie Lane that's occupying that quarter acre. So anyway, please oppose this. Thank you.
Next speaker request I have is from Julie Mueller.
Thank you, and thank you for letting us speak today on this. I would like to request that you do honor and respect the 10-acre parcels. When we moved out there, we had to comply with everything. We had no problem with it. We wanted to be out where it wasn't congested full of neighbors. And by allowing them to do this, and I, you know, there's no reason to negatively affect what the quality of life is out there for all of us, and there's still opportunities for people to buy 10-acre lots. There are opportunities for those, but we would just really appreciate you not approving this, and there are other people who are at work who are not able to come and voice their opposition, so it will negatively affect a lot of us. Thank you.
I have a quick question for you. Is Neck Yoke, is Neck Yoke Road a dead-end road?
Neck Yoke Road goes off of Highway 16 all the way over to Rockerville, so that goes. But this is on the gravel road that is a dead-end road.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else? Here comes Janelle.
That sounded really ominous. Here comes Janelle.
Here comes Janelle. Answered my own question.
Good morning. My name's Janelle Fink. I'm with KTM Design Solutions, and I am here on behalf of Mr. Rampelberg. While I understand and appreciate, you know, the comments that have been offered by the neighbors for this area, it's pretty difficult to look at the zoning map here with a recent zoning changes that took place within our county within the last year to year and a half. They updated their zoning ordinance and updated their zoning maps. The lots directly to the east of this are consistent in size in the, less than the 10-acre parcels. And so the precedent has already been set and already been established for this particular area. And so that you know, Mr. Rampelberg is only proposing to divide into two lots at the present time, and he doesn't have any desire to subdivide further. Again, when we selected or understood that we needed to rezone, I look at the future land use map and I look at the current zoning map, and when I see that rural residential, again, that just tells me or directs me as, as an advisor and a consultant and even a landowner that that's what, what an appropriate use is in that area. And I, in my opinion, it would be very difficult to deny Mr. Rampelberg the same type of zoning use that is enjoyed by neighbors within this half-mile radius of his property. As to the comment about the math on the property, there's some additional right-of-way that needed to be dedicated to Neck Yoke Road, and so that's why the lots fall a little bit smaller than what's noted. And you don't see, I don't believe you have the plat linked with your application since it goes through the county. Oh, yay, there it is. Yeah, there's a small portion of right-of-way that's dedicated to Neck Yoke Road, but I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have. But I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have. Thank you.
Any questions for Janelle?
No, just for staff, if I could, Chairman, when you haven't been. Cody? So it goes from ag to rural? Is that why, because they put it into nine acre plots and the next, they couldn't be ags, they had to be ten?
Correct.
But he plans to leave it at nine and a quarter, nine and a half?
That's what they're proposing with the city, correct?
Okay. I was wondering why he left it at nine if he wanted to do it rural, but that made sense to take it from ag to rural because it couldn't be ag anymore at ten acres.
Correct. And I, and I believe what Janelle was saying earlier was that there is an in-between with, with ranchette for five acres. But since there is residential in the area, there is that already existing zoning uses within that half mile. So I believe that's why they went with the rural residential.
But they planned to leave it nine and nine and a half?
Correct. That's what's.
That's why they didn't.
To the city.
I guess it.
That's why they.
Planned on leaving it that way, why didn't they leave it, why didn't they put it ranchette? I guess just because the other ones?
Because there's already the existing zoning and future land use in the area as for rural residential.
Okay.
So there's already an existing subdivision that has that, that rural residential zoning.
Well, because it's ag in the area, it doesn't make sense to me then to, to, if he plans to leave it at nine acres each, why not leave it at nine acres and do it at ranchette? Guess that would be my recommendation if he plans on not subdividing it instead of going to rural already, but that's my point of view. I'm not trying to tell him what to do with his land. He's telling us. He wants nine acre lots, basically, so.
Further questions for staff?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Yeah, Cody, my, my take on it's the same thing. If you have neighbors concerned about going to the rural, the ranchette seems to be, and it's in our new comprehensive plan. And certainly, I would assume available for the same rezone request, although that isn't what they're requesting. It certainly would be, he's done it, or they and the survey people have done as close as they can get to a fifty-fifty split with the proper dedication. And I, I wonder how much the dedication took away from the fifty-fifty split too, but I figured Janelle must know that, but.
Janelle, do you have any answer to that? Maybe is why they didn't go ranchette then? Instead of just because it was, had some three acre lots?
Because when we look at the precedent, we look at the same thing that planning staff does. And there are already lots that are similar size and similar zoning designation to the rural residential. So that seems, that tells me that that's what's appropriate for size and an appropriate use within that area. And I think that's why staff recommended approval.
So Chairman.
Go ahead.
So precedent around it is ag, actually, Janelle. And then further to the, I don't know if it's the east or the west on that map, but then it has the three acre lots. So basically around there, I don't think you have any complaints. If you're going to leave it nine acre lots, put it down to ranchette. Unless, like I said, the plan is not to stay ranchette or even nine acres. So my point is, is there a different plan that we don't know about today that they're doing on it? If not, it seems like to me, then I would more make the motion to leave it as like a ranchette instead of a rural. That would be less precedent, I guess, for that area, for me.
Is that a motion?
Can we switch it without the owner being here? No, I didn't think so, Rich.
Yeah, so that was maybe my next question is to staff. Go ahead.
They would have to submit a whole new application and do notices and everything.
Yeah, Megan Krueger with the state's attorney's office. And, and the reason why is because of the notice requirements by state law. We have specific notice requirements and it's, it was noticed up in one way and now we would be making a motion on something different. And it would have to be noticed again for another meeting.
So Chairman, my point would be if they wanted it to be nine acre lots, that's what they want to leave it as. For me to be able to vote yes on this, I would have to have them switch to ranchette. That would be my point.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I did have one for Cody. One of the local neighbors referred to another hundred acres in that area. And I just want to make sure so I'm looking at it correctly. Both the, the old comprehensive plan and the new one would indicate that's probably a hunt, agriculture right now, right?
In, in that area, yes, but I believe most of the land used in that area is not actually agriculture. Most of it's residential.
Expanding that, will you?
So like if you, if you look at the five acre lots across the street, directly across.
Right.
Those are all.
Ranchette.
They're, they're zone ag, but they're residential use.
I, I see you. I'll have you come back.
I'll, I can let people speak if they.
No, go ahead, Cody. We're going to finish the, with questions for staff and then we'll pull.
The hundred acres he noted were to the north end. That would be the south. It'd be to the right of it on the, your drawing, the way you've got it on the screen. I know which way is north, but it's, it's not gone. In other words, it's to the right over here.
I'm, I'm not familiar with what, what property they're talking about for sale. Are you talking about the, which properties are already zoned rural residential?
Go, if you could show us where. Hold on, let's finish with Cody and then.
But I, but I, I've got to get him to where I'm talking about. One of the people noted that there was a hundred acres in the area that was still.
I think that was Mr. Mueller. That, that indicated that there was a bunch of property for sale.
So Chairman, can we, can we have a map of the future land use or what's going on right now? Just, not just that area, that would probably be helpful.
Can you just zoom out then, Cody, and then turn on the future land use on the screen?
Thank you, Chairman. Mostly ag.
Does that answer your question? Charlie?
Yeah, it'd have to be over this way that he's referring to.
So Chairman, Cody, so what were you talking about? Five acres? I mean, it doesn't show it on this map. There's five acre ranchettes where?
Across the street.
Yeah, so if you, if you look at, we look in the neighborhood, so like that half mile. Looking at it, yeah, there's properties that are used for ag, but I would say the vast majority, they're like directly across the street. I don't know if this guy's zoned ag. I know he's zoned ag, but I don't know if he's taxed ag. He's taxed ag. So he might be zoned ag, but in order to actually have an agriculture use, like you're taxed ag.
Yeah, but they'll have a parcel. A lot of ag will have five acre parcels in between it. Remember for their residential areas, because they split those out a lot of times in ag. If you notice, when people come in, they'll say, I like my residence broken out. They will put those in five acre parcels, even on a hundred and twenty acres, forty acres, different types of parcels. So that's quite normal. I'm saying that yellow, is the yellow is what you're saying that is ranchette?
No, yellow is the rural residential that was.
Which is the three acre one.
Which is the three acres, which is.
So the rest of it's probably ag with a five acre parcels on it because, like I said, they do that a lot when they're breaking out their residential area for tax purposes, if I'm correct.
Further questions for Cody?
I have one. What are the material usage differences between these two designations, ranchette and rural residential? I mean, what practical distinctions would take place if you had two of these next to each other? One could do this and the other could do that. Tell me the differences.
So ranchette's similar to agriculture where there's some agricultural uses that you can use, not nearly as many as agriculture. Residential would just be residential uses like a house, accessory structures.
So the only distinction would be with the ranchette, you could have sort of some hobby egg, egg stuff if you wanted, right?
Yeah, I believe you can have like a greenhouse if you want it without a conditional use permit, just different stuff like that. One thing to consider is rural residential is large lot residential areas, which is, I know that the, the major land use of this area, future land use is ag. But three acre large lot in this area is not an uncommon thing.
Go ahead.
So the fear is that if we, if we designate this rural residential, we have somehow opened the door to extended urbanization, sort of, and that, that we would be somehow leaving the history of ag usage and the large kind of hobby farms or whatever you want to call them would, this, this would be a precedent. Is that the notion?
I believe, I believe that's what the, what the neighbors are saying. Also, one thing to consider is this is in the three mile planning jurisdiction of the city of Rapid City. So in theory, over time, this area is meant to be developed. That's why it's in that city's three mile planning jurisdiction.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. Yeah, that's, that's very true.
So Chairman.
Go ahead.
The issue here is if they wanted nine acre lots, okay? They didn't want to put it into rural because they should have been ranchette, because what they wanted was nine acre lots, right? So if that's what they wanted, we're not doing anything bad by making it and telling them we want ranchette. Unless the intent is to take those nine acres on each set and put a total of six houses on the, on that land instead of just a couple. So what is the intent? Janelle said the intent isn't to put more houses. So like I said, nine acre lots are not going to be a, a bad thing for ranchette. Like, and I don't see it changing the, the use of it unless, like I said, they're going to put six houses in the future. And this was, they're just telling us nine acres for now and then doing rural and then it's been redone to rural. And then come back two months later and say, whoops, you know, for the demand of houses, I think now we want to put six on there. Because that's what I'm seeing a lot of times on this change of use for future land use areas, so.
Well, I, I appreciate that. That's probably true, but it's also the reality of development. I mean, people take areas like that and when the market will bear it, they decide to subdivide. And this is not twenty miles from Rapid City. I mean, as you say, it's soon going to be a portion, a part of Rapid City's, you know, three mile area and so forth. And so I think we're kind of naive to think that this is going to remain agriculture for any length of time. And for some reason, the developer wants to have smaller components, lots, and that designation. I mean, wants that designation. And I think maybe the developer needs to, or the, the owner needs to speak to that. Maybe Janelle could speak more in more detail. But I, I, I'm, I'm hesitant to frustrate. I, I think that would just be sort of a gesture. I mean, because like you say, those people, if they really want to develop, it'll come back in six months or a year or two years or five years, depending on the market. And say, we want to, and realistically, it is land that will eventually be developed in, in a, in a much more dense way, I think. And I, you know, we have to be realistic about that. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, I was just happy to try and expound upon your question. We submitted the plat through the city of Rapid City, have our preliminary approvals. One of the contingencies is that the zoning be appropriate, be changed to allow for the subdivision. And again, as I look at the existing zoning in the area, the comprehensive plan that shows future land use of the rural residential within a half a mile of this, that was the direction that we took when we submitted the application. And I don't know that even if we did rezone this to ranchette, that somebody down the road could come in and ask to rezone it to rural residential based on the same conclusions that, you know, that we see on the existing map and we see on the other, other uses.
Chairman.
Go ahead.
You said that the city of Rapid City zoned the subdivision. That's what you just said?
No, they, they approved the preliminary plat with the condition that the zoning be modified because right now it's ag, so you need to modify the zoning so that we can do the two lots.
I thought you said, just said zone for the subdivision, just a second ago.
It has to be rezoned to match the lot size for the, the plat that was preliminarily approved.
I think to be realistic, we can, we can actually rezone the whole three mile limit if we wanted to. But if it doesn't fit what is happening in the area now and to be, I don't think it's naive to think that maybe it, all these houses and all these things, how many do we need and how much do we need to put in areas that right now are ag? Because before we'd call it spot zoning, but it's not called that anymore. It's called, we need some houses, so realistically, we need to put them wherever we can. And so let's rezone the three mile limit because Rapid City has that jurisdiction over us, which is causing the county a lot of issues. Because we do not have, I'll keep saying this, we don't have the same transportation. We don't have the same amenities as the, the city has. That's the realistic naive thing that I believe is not naive. I think it's causing us lots of issues and, and for cash flow and budget. Taking these subdivisions out further and further and making them with city amenities, meaning water, sewer, stuff like that, adding curb gutters, sidewalk, putting impervious areas and areas that shouldn't probably have that much cement, is what I say. That's the reality of all this. So I'm not against people doing what they want to do with their land, not at all. But if it starts causing issues for our county that aren't realistic, I don't think that's naive. I think that's trying to figure out if you want nine acre lots, ask for ranchette. If you wanted rural residential and you plan in the future not to do anything with it, keep it at ranchette and come back and ask for rural when you switch it. So, thank you.
My question is in regards to water. Does everyone have private wells or is there a water district?
Currently, there are private wells.
Okay. Further questions?
On this parcel, sorry.
For Janelle. Thank you. Annie, correct? Please come forward.
Annie Daniel, right across the street where the arrow is pointing. Just so everybody's aware, I wanted to clarify how they were using the term that we were rural residential, those four or five acre plots. Those plots were grandfathered in to light ag decades and decades and decades ago. They were not rezoned recently. We've got light ag on our property. We've got a ton of chickens. We had goats, all kinds of stuff. So those areas, I want to completely clarify, that's light ag there. They were grandfathered in. There was no rezoning for them. Thank you.
Do you want to speak again?
Yes, please come forward.
Thank you. Julie Mueller, again. When we bought our land in the early nineties, we were told specifically it's ten acres per parcel. There's no getting around it. That's what it is. We bought it with that understanding. And across the road, it's my, that was, that's been there for years. And it's my understanding that there hasn't been any more that, that are that small. They've all been even larger areas than that. So those, a lot of those houses were there way before we even bought our land. So that might have been a different strategy way back then. But since the early nineties, when we bought ours, it has been strictly ten acres per parcel. And that's what we are trying to save. And I understand what you're saying. The city might move out there. There's still plenty of land, but just because the city may want to do things out there, doesn't mean that any of us are going to sell our property to, to put more houses out there. We have to really appreciate what we have out in the country a little bit, and we don't want to see that go away. So thank you very much for your time.
Does anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this item? I have another question for staff, but I want to make sure that if there's any other people in the audience that wish to speak, that they get their chance. Mike, do you want to come back up?
Thank you again. As the zoning showed, I appreciate Cody's comments that he believes this and believes that. But the actuality is there's a lot of hay harvested out there. There are horses, there are chickens, there are other, other agricultural activities. And we just met with our neighbors last night up on the hill, which one, one of those that feed the road district fund. And they had to drop years ago their well, they had to drop their pump, just like a lot of people did. So the water impact could, could be affected on, on the aquifer. You start stacking a bunch of houses up there. So please consider that as well. And I'd stand for any other questions. Thank you.
Cody, your question. What would the mechanical process be here? I'm trying to understand if there's a. if there's a, a middle ground here. It seems to me that if the landowners are trying to, I'm listening to what Deb's saying, if the landowners are coming in, they say, we want two nine-acre parcels, and they probably would have been close to two 10-acre parcels, quite frankly, if they didn't have to deed some of the right of way over. And what's the mechanical process? So I understand what it would be for them to re-advertise and come in for rural ranchette, if that's the, if that's the five-acre minimum. Because then that, that way, the zoning that they're asking for would ma, more match, scratch that, more closely match what their intent is.
Cody Sack, environmental planner. So, what would happen? Obviously, you guys know you would make the recommendation. The board would either approve your recommendation or deny your recommendation. If they approve your recommendation to, say, you, say the planning commission denies rural residential, and the, the board affirms it, they would have to come back in and just start the whole process over. They'd have to apply to rezone a tag or ranchette. They'd have to send letters, post signs, come to the planning commission again, and go in front of the board again.
Can we do that and waive any fees associated with that, so they don't have to double pay?
They would, they would have to request to get on the agenda with the board of commissioners, and the board of commissioners would have to grant their money back. They'd have to pay for it, but the board, they could request that second application fee back from the board.
But as the planning commission, we could make that recommendation to the, to the board, or no?
I would say, I, I do not believe so.
The board can only waive penalty fees.
Oh, so the board can only waive penalty fees, not application fees. They wouldn't be able to.
Okay. Well, I, I guess my general thoughts are, are in line with, with Jim. I, I think that the pressure from, to develop in the ancillary area around Rapid City is going to continue to grow. I think the harder problems that, that we will have is, is probably along the, the water lines, especially as we get further up into the, the hard rock area of the Black Hills, so further west and, and south of this location. But I, I would be agreeable to, I, I think that I would be agreeable to the, you know, having them come back with, with the ranchette. I, I think that that does two things. That keeps the lot size, what they're planning on doing, and it also allows the, the acreage to, to stay in line with what, I, I believe these folks thought the, the acreage was supposed to be when, when they purchased it, or the minimum, for the minimum lot sizes.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Just a comment like yours, and, and I see it a little bit in a different way. We're seeing more and more pressure, and I'm sure Cody sees it in his planning, from the purchase of our land by people that, the Rampelbergs are getting older. They're doing this to stabilize the land that they do have, and that's how they see fit to use it. And I think that's an important factor. But new owners may come in and they see it as, as Commissioner Hadcock was saying, that they could further divide it than from what it was, whether it was five acres or three acres. My problem is, it's on our ordinance. It's, it's, it's people coming from the outside that hire representatives that have to do their job for them, whether they be Janelle or other folks, and they do their job correctly under the ordinance. It's what do we do? We're stymied. These folks historically bought their property, as you were indicating, and, and perceive the uses that way. But down the road, they're going to have survivors of the property rights as well. We just see this in, in almost every area, and, and it's tough for us, I think, to avoid following the rule of the ordinance. In other words, if that's a property owner's right, whether we like it or not, that's what the ordinance says, and that's what we're here to try to do the best. And I understand what you're saying, is we pick another ordinance. But that five acres may not stand any better than the existing one. Thank you.
You had something, Mike?
And, and this totally different deal. And I'm not that familiar with this, but is there any way a person can grant a variance, since these, these are so close to 10 acres, and leave a mag? It can't be done, okay?
You'd have to show a hardship on why you can't.
Well, I was just curious.
Ten acres.
It would make life a lot simpler if it could, if it can.
Go ahead, Deb.
I guess the bottom line is, if you ask for nine, nine-acre lots, I'm going to give you nine-acre lots with ranchette. If you ask me for rural and you're going to subdivide, be up straight. I'm going to give you rural, depending on what you're asking. So, what I'm saying, whether it be subdivided or not, we've had this before, where they said, well, we want nine-acre lots, we don't want it rural. It might happen in the future. Then at about a month or two from now, now we got it rural, three-acre lots. They're allowed to do that in a certain extent, but already put rural three-acre lots all the way around here, because, like I keep telling people, you take it from this to urban, and now everything around it's going to be urban. Everything you take to ranchette, or rural, or wherever you're taking it, sets precedent. I'll keep saying, just because you have three-mile limit, we have some issues with that three-mile limit. Having city have precedent on that, we have zoning, and they have, what's it called?
Plating.
Plating. That plating has caused us some issues. So, we can continue to say, okay, it's going to build out in the future, and the city has the plating. But if we don't rezone it so they could plant it into things that the, the county cannot control or afford to be able to take care of in the future, then we can't follow what the city wants in plating. I'll keep saying that, because we don't have the amenities to do that. We don't have the cash flow in Pennington County for a budget to take care of the roads and the things that they want us to take care of. Then what happens is you get those homeowners associations, they last for a while, and then they're dropped. We've had that in Rapid Valley, we've had, had that in other areas, and what happened to those roads, and we took them over. So, what I'm saying is, what do we want to do as a county? What do we want to do in a planning commission for the future? We want people to be able to have what they want on their land. They're asking for nine-acre lots, which is ranchette. So, I'll keep saying, do they want rural because they want to subdivide now? Or are we ready to do rural in this area in the first place? Because city has plating over it. City doesn't get to do what they want unless the county decides that, that zoning is, is okay for our county to take care of in the future as well. Because they are not going to take care of those properties once this is built. We are, right? So, I'm not, I'm not trying to beat up the city, because I like the city. I'm just saying, I've seen it also in the city. You don't have enough water, sewer, infrastructure to take care of something, yet you built it out, and you said, we'll get it later. Hasn't been oversized, hasn't been done in the same fashion that we're doing some of this stuff in the county, but we got to be able to take care of it as a county. We don't have the budget for all the infrastructure and the things that they need in the roads. We don't get sales tax. So, that, that county department, when you start rural out there, that's a precedent. Are we, are we going to be able to take care of rural residential now that we want rural residential there? And did the landowner ask for rural? When it should have been ranchette? I don't know.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Hadcock, is that a similar situation to what the county's position is about how Sheraton Lake developed and went farther? Is that similar to what you're talking about?
My, that'd be, I'm not going to speak county, I'm going to speak Deb.
Okay.
I think a lot of times, when we're doing things, we need to look at the infrastructure and what the county can take care of also. Just because they want it, just because it's their land, it becomes county once we've zoned it and planted it. Are we able to be able to take care of those people's needs in the areas that we're developing? Is the roads going to be, have to be oversized? Remember, we talked about this before, in Old Hill City Road and some other areas, putting a bunch of subdivisions in there, and then coming and saying, now that road needs to be oversized, maybe we need some water sewer, maybe we need some other things for drainage. All these things need to be considered when you're popping out and saying, we need houses. This is their land. Well, we also need to be able to be cognizant of what that's going to cost the other taxpayers by letting subdivision come, coming in, in areas that they're not, those subdivisions aren't paying for those oversizing. So, maybe some, I should say, with property tax, but a lot of the highway department is not paid through property tax. So, just food for thought.
Further questions for staff? Mr. Mueller, do you want to speak again?
I have two salient points, which Commissioner Hadcock.
Yeah, okay. Please come forward.
So, this three-mile-wide ribbon around Rapid City affects us out there, but we have absolutely no representation at the city level as a city council, representative, at large, or anything. So, the notice for that going to plating to the city, therefore, was not given to the neighbors for notice before today's meeting. That took place in January on the 27th, the city planning adjustment. So, please consider that as, as maybe a lot, a loophole that Commissioner Hadcock is alluding to, that we have issues trying to get things represented in that three-mile bound, boundary. So, I don't believe the city's going to force development. We're not against development, but we, we'd prefer some consideration of that as well. Thank you.
Further questions? Does anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this item? Okay. With that, staff is recommending approval of comprehensive plan amendment CA 22-02. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Well, second for discussion. Further discussion?
Do a substitute to deny.
So, can I, can I say one thing real fast? If it's to deny, can it, make it to deny without prejudice? Because that would allow them to come in with the application for the ranchette. If you just deny it, they wouldn't be able to come in for a year.
Yeah, but they could come out there.
Substitute motion to deny without prejudice. Is there a second? Motion in second on the substitute motion. Further discussion? As I sit here, I will be in favor of the substitute motion. And normally, I would not, normally, I am 100% for property rights. The specific reason that I will be in favor of the substitute motion is, is simply that the proposed zoning and the proposed comprehensive plan amendment don't match the plat. If they come back and, and, and want the, the ranchette zoning designation, I, I'll, I'll be in favor of that, because it's, it's coincident with what, what I'm seeing as, as far as the plat goes. I heard what Deb said, and I don't, I don't, I don't, I understand the roads and some of those other items, but they're, they're getting the sales tax for the road district, or they, they should be. So, I would think that the road should be taken care of. But I think the long-term issue in and around this area, specifically west and south of Rapid City, will be water. That will be the hard one. So, further discussion? Noting none, all those in favor of the substitute motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no?
No.
Where were you on the?
Aye.
Aye, um, okay. So, that's, that, uh, motion passes.
Number nine, also deny without prejudice.
The, the motion was to deny without prejudice.
On the second one, too, after, I'm sorry, we have to vote.
The rezone.
On the rezone.
Yeah.
So, the primary motion was to, staff recommends approval of a comprehensive plan amendment CA 22-02. And the motion was for approval. Is there just further discussion on that item?
It was the motion to deny without prejudice, since it goes with number eight, right? One was comprehensive plan, and one was rezone.
Well, no, we're not on item nine yet.
Oh, I thought you were, I thought you said we're, the other one.
The substitute motion should carry the primary motion on, on eight. So, in my mind, we're, we should be done with eight. Excuse me.
Yes, Megan Crewe with the State's Attorney's Office, I would suggest that you take the rezone up as a separate matter next.
Yes.
That's what I meant. That was my motion. Sorry, Rich, to confuse you.
Now, we're on item nine, the rezone.
That would be my motion to deny without prejudice.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in second to deny without prejudice, item nine. Further discussion? Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Run item 10.
Cody Sack, environmental planner. Item 10 is planning and development overlay PU 22-03. It is to allow planning and development overlay for specialty resorts to include 50 RV camp sites, 25 rental cabins, a shower house, a wedding venue, a bar or saloon area, and a guide service. The applicant and landowners, Subos LLC, Nathan and Alexis Sobleski. The location of the property is 24th, 300, 173rd Avenue. Currently, the zoning is agriculture district with the land use of residential and agriculture. Access is off 173rd Avenue, and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. When approving planning and development overlays, we look at seven criteria. They're on the screen. I'll read the answers. For number one, yes, the uses of the proposed PUD overlay district conform to the uses by right or conditional use permits in an agriculture district. Number two, yes, the uses of the proposed PUD overlay district are a type that are located to minimize detrimental influence upon surrounding properties. Number three, yes, the uses of the proposed PUD overlay district meet the standards governing area density and off-street parking of the, of an agriculture district. Number four, yes, the proposed PUD overlay district involves two properties that are combined 620 acres. Number five, yes, the proposed PUD overlay district is owned by the applicants and managers, Nathan and Alexis Sobleski. Number six, yes, the uses of the proposed PUD overlay district are designed as to not be detrimental to or in danger of the public health, safety, or general welfare. Number seven does not apply. We also look at the seven criteria, another seven criteria, and I'll read those answers as well. For number one, the use of the, the proposed PUD overlay district should not be detrimental or in danger of public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Number two, the use of the proposed PUD overlay district should not substantially impair, diminish the uses, values, enjoyment, or other property in the neighborhood for the purposes permitted. However, the proposed PUD does run alongside of other neighboring properties, the access road. Number three, the use of the proposed PUD overlay should not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding properties. Number four, the proposed PUD overlay district contains adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary site improvements. Number five, yes, the existing approach will provide ingress and egresses to minimize traffic congestion and should say 173rd Avenue. Number six, the requested uses conform to all applicable regulations of the agriculture district with an approv, with an approved PUD overlay. And number seven, future land use is identified as agriculture, large lot residential in natural areas is consistent within this district. For what's currently on the properties, for tax ID 1513, the property to the south that is vacant of any structures, and tax ID 15595 is the property to the north, and it contains a single-family residence, as well as an onsite wastewater treatment system. This was routed out for interdepartmental, interdepartmental review. There were no major comments or concerns that were received. I believe there's just some addressing concerns that are pretty standard with a request like this. I believe there's just some addressing concerns that are pretty standard with a request like this. The applicants are requesting a PUD overlay to allow a recreational resort on the subject property. The uses include RV spots, rental cabins, saloon or bar, future wedding venue and a guiding service. Access to the resort will be often approved section line right away. The resort will operate throughout the year. However, the main use of the property will be May through August, September through April. The resort will be mainly used for people staying on the property for the guiding service. The applicants are working with the planning department in the South Dakota Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources on installing a septic system on the property that will service the RV sites and cabins. With that, staff is recommending approval of planning and development overlay PU 22-03 with conditions.
Thank you. Questions for staff on this item?
Chairman.
Go ahead.
How many acres is this on?
It's on a total of 620.
Wow, awesome. Okay, thank you.
Further questions?
Go ahead, Mike.
Go ahead, Mike.
Yes, sir, I'm done.
Okay. 25 acres approximately that will be used for the setup?
Approximately, most of it will be actually occur on the property to the south. This is where the RV spots will be and most of it will be at within a certain acreage on that property.
That was my question is where is it in this thing?
It's right in this area right here, if you can see on the screen. It's right in there.
Right in the lower part.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
The, to the north currently, most of that will be used for the guiding service like guided hunting. But they may expand in the future to that property as well.
Charlie?
Yeah, Cody, I'd like to see add the new wording for the fire permits, if you would. I'm, and by new wording, I'm saying I use page five of our last set of minutes. There was a condition five and six about the permits and whatnot, if we would. I don't have any problems, but it'd take you two conditions the way we wrote it up.
Yeah, we can add those two conditions.
And then I had one more, and I don't know that I missed something or whatever, but I assume when you say campsites, that involves either or on RV. And then are, is the septic going to be and water going to be brought to those?
Yep, correct. He's working with the Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources and Aaron Teeman in our office on getting a septic system involved. And they were starting on working on the water lines and I believe drilling an additional well for that southern property to service that campground.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Further questions? Okay. I'm not clear if the speaker request form I have is for this one. It just said PUD overlay. It was from Bobby Johnson and I have PUD overlays on item 10, 12 and 13. For number 12, thank you. With that said, is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? I do have one gentleman. Please come forward and state your name when you get to the lectern.
Mike Learcamp, I own the property that pretty much surrounds this proposed deal. My concern is the sewer plan that they have. I guess I haven't talked to Nate and Lexi about that, but what does the state require for that many campsites and RVs? I mean, is it demeration pond, holding pond or?
I have some general ideas on what they would require, but I'll let Cody answer that.
Cody Sack, environmental planner. So I'm not sure exactly what they would require. He just has to get approval from them. So whatever he proposes through the state, the state has to, has to approve and Aaron Teeman in our office has to approve as well.
So it could be a multi-cell septic system or something there thereabouts?
Yeah, for instance, there's a similar request that we just did out on Highway 16 that has four different septic systems that are, I believe, I don't know if those are mounds or beds, but he could put in four bed systems spaced throughout the property. It could be mounds, it could be trenches. It just depends on what, what the state will approve.
Currently, the county doesn't have the specifics on what his plan is. Is that correct?
Correct, no. He would just need to have that in place prior to operation of the, of the PUD.
Will any of that have to come back to this, this board?
Uh, no, it wouldn't have to unless the planning commission wanted an update sooner than the, the regular year.
I'm trying to understand how this gentleman can understand what's going to happen.
So Chairman, can we ask Brittany? She's pretty familiar with septics and drainage and, and they'd have to go through. Brittany is our planning director. Maybe she could give us kind of idea what she's thinking and what he would have to do with that 20 sites.
Sure, so for 20 sites, how it's calculated is each RV site would be calculated at 100 gallons per person per day. So that's how they look at that. And then depending upon the shower house and the other uses, my guess would be they at least have to have multi, either drain fields or mound systems. We don't know what the soils are like out there. If it's in that heavy clay type soil, it's likely that it'd be a mound system. Once it gets over that 1,800 square feet, they have to be pressurized and then they have to do alternating beds. So it'll come down to that overall gallons per day and the actual soil types.
But for our process, how do we answer this gentleman's question on whether he's going to see lagoons out there or septic? I mean, because if it's septic, then it, then in my mind, it's out of sight. It's out, it's taking care of itself, but if it's another system, it's more impactful to the adjacent landowners.
Right, and staff would actually prefer not to have lagoons because there's very little oversight on those septic systems. We do have more oversight.
Sure.
And Mr. Learcamp can probably tell you what the soils are like out there, so. Are the soils, do you have septic or what do you have, Mr. Learcamp?
Well, at the house site there, that's infiltrator system. It's just goes down the hill, sandy loam ground. 520 acres to start with, it's not 620. And the highway coming up there is 174th Avenue. It's not 173rd. But that infiltrator system at the house seems to be working fine. That's what we have at our house. It's a mile straight west. And as far as water, we've got a well right 128 there on that other, in that section that's just got three foot of water in it. And you can pump that dry. And then I just drilled a new well up on Lot 20 or that northeast corridor, that other section. And that's pretty fragile too. I can pump that down. So I hope if they're going to use deep wells or shallow wells, that's the kind of questions I have.
Okay.
Shallow well, there's three springs on that property I know of and what they hit, I don't know. I don't think they've even drilled yet, but just the water and the sewer, I guess, is my concern, what's going to happen there.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Cody, do you know the answers to those?
So the, the well one, I do not. That's handled by, fully by the state. We don't really see anything with that. For the septic system, I just talked to the applicant. The, the state's working with them on doing three different septic systems with 1,500 gallon tanks that will service different sections of the, of the property. So there'll be three systems on that property with septic tank and drain field, no lagoons.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Charlie.
I noticed on the Sobos LLC at the bottom of it says saloon. You know, are we also looking at that?
They are, yeah.
Mr. Learcamp said he's okay with that. I'm kidding.
Well, I'm saying that may be, that may be another septic and water use issue is what I'm getting at besides the, the items that we have listed here at the campground, the wedding, the wedding venues, another, we know sporadic type of use. I certainly don't see any problems with guiding services. I would want to know some ideas about saloon. Tell me.
So one, one thing to consider is anytime that they, they'll have to submit a, an onsite wastewater treatment system application to us. Aaron Teeman will approve or deny based off of that. And so we'll know how much, how many gallons per day each system can hold. So if he comes in for a building permit for the saloon and the saloon doesn't, would push the gallons per day over what that septic system could hold, he would have to update his septic. So it'd get caught on the building permit anytime like something septic needed to be upgraded or new septic needed to be installed.
Okay, just a follow up question then. In other words, then if we look at the other pages, they're working with the planning department, SD, D A N R. You're going to look at that and it may or may not include the saloon existing use or, or use.
I believe that all of the uses that he's providing are going to be serviced by, what he's proposing is going to be serviced by that, that system.
It's going to be included now.
He would be able to answer that better than I would, but I know when I met with him, I told him that when they did their septic that it would behoove them to size it properly right from the start for what they were proposing to do in the future. That way they wouldn't have any hangups or anything. Whether they, they wanted to do that or not, that would be a question for them.
The applicant is here if you'd like to ask.
Well, I just noticed none of our conditions have anything about a saloon. So that's all I was heading into. In other words, I think we're going to have to review some conditions involving a saloon too for the neighbors.
Further questions with staff before it looks like the applicants can speak?
Thank you.
Okay, do you folks want to come up and speak, please? Go ahead and state your name.
Nate Sobleski, Sobos LLC.
Alexis Sobleski, Sobos LLC owner.
Just wanted to kind of explain everything, maybe it'll answer a lot of the questions. So we'll start with the saloon since we just finished with that. We're just building a four grain bin deal outside with camo netting over it. And we're just going to host it during the rally typically is what we're planning on doing is just the 10 days for the rally doing that. And then the cabins, the 25 cabins, we're not, we talked to the Department of Health and they, they said it's just easier to not plumb those. So we're not going to do anything with water or septic in those. We'll use our shower house for those guests. So that'll, that'll coincide with the septic system at the campground. And then they said if we want to have like tent campers, because I think that was another kind of question earlier, tent campers will have outhouses as well or porta johns. So that'll be for them. And then the guide service will have the cabins also for those people and the campground for those people that want to stay. Because we don't just guide on our own property. We're both tribal members and we're both tribal guides for Pine Ridge Indian Reservation. So that's kind of the ultimate plan. As far as the septic system goes, our guy Bob Sepulca has been in touch with the DNR to make sure that we're doing all of our septic systems according to code. And any buildings that are built in the future, they just told us to put this all on one plan because this isn't all happening right away. Obviously, we have to build some revenue to be able to expand, but we'll obviously put in newer septic systems with every building we build to, to be legal, I guess, so. You got anything?
Nope. Campground is our priority. That's the first thing that we are wanting to put in, so.
Yeah, we're super excited. I just retired from the military and this is our new opportunity, so definitely excited for this.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicants? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this item? Noting none, staff recommends approval of planned unit development overlay PU 22-03 with 26 conditions. And the 27th would be the addition of our standard language regarding fire pits, correct, Charlie?
Correct.
Okay, were there any other conditions that you wanted?
I just think we need to comment that this is, they're kind of phasing into it. In other words, so I think that's going to have to be in the motion. In other words, they've been kind enough to tell us where they're headed. But I think we've got to include in our motion so that additional conditions and, and things in regard to the septic can be met, which they are already in the planning's working with, but it's not in here, so.
Brittany, will you come up and, yeah, address Charles?
So thank you. I didn't mean to muck it up anymore, but.
I think to cover some of the concerns that the planning commission is having regarding this, maybe have a six month review instead of the year review because that would give you a chance to see where they are in their phasing and, and it'll get, you know, kind of in that summer season. So you'll see through the construction season.
That'd be nice to see. That'd be nice to see a bunch of people just to see how.
I'd so move with my additional condition plus a six month review, not the normal one year review. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in second with the stated condition modifications. Further discussion?
Chairman.
Go ahead.
And that isn't a penalty in a sense either. It's just that it's kind of nice to, when we do some of these things, it'd be kind of cool to see how far you've gotten, what you guys have done. Because we did some in like Quinn and different areas, some really cool stuff. So it's, it's not a penalty on you unless you're doing something wrong, but it'll be cool to see where you guys have headed, so.
Further discussion? Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Item 11.
Morning Commissioners, Jason Thunison, Deputy Planning Director. Item 11 is Major Plan Unit Development Amendment PU 22-02 to amend the existing planned unit development to allow 20 full service RV sites, five cabins to be constructed within the existing 20 by 20 or 20 by 80 foot building and a caretakers slash managers residence to include an office building. The applicant is Aaron Olson. He's in the audience if you have any questions for him. Property owner is currently Rushmore Forest Products. Their agent is KTM Design Solutions. Janelle is also in the audience if you have questions for her. Location of the property is 23849 Highway 385. Currently zoned planned unit development district. Existing land use is commercial. Access off Highway 385 and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. Board Commissioners did approve planned unit development PU 9602 on April 2nd of 1996 with the conditions that are on the screen. Staff did verify those moving forward. As the property sits today, there is a storage warehouse that was built in 1902, an outhouse, a shed. And there have been three mobile homes that have shuffled on and off the property over the years as well as a carport. One of those has a removal permit, but the two mobile homes and the carport will need removal permits. And that is captured as a condition of approval. There's currently an onsite wastewater treatment system with two valid operating permits and two pump records. There's also a sign permit on the property for an electronic message board that has been, that has been removed. Request was sent out for interdepartmental review. Emergency services did have a few comments. The first one being each of the five cabins should be clearly marked with indicated cabin number be visible from the driveway and that the full physical address be posted on a sign inside each cabin. The second comment was the main address number should be clearly posted on the office facing the driveway and where the main campground driveway intersects Highway 385. And the last comment is that each of the RV parking spots be marked with a unique spot number clearly visible from the driveway and that each RV be given something on check in showing the complete physical address of the campground. And each of those are covered as conditions of approval. No other objections or concerns were received. Staff's analysis of the request is that staff did conduct a site visit to validate the existing conditions were being met and photos are attached to your packets. The applicant plans to expand operations within the planned unit development. These uses appear to be consistent with the uses already permitted under the existing planned unit development. The applicant will need to provide the planning department with current licenses from the South Dakota Department of Health and the South Dakota Department of Revenue prior to operation. The existing outhouse will need to either be filled or rendered inoperable or removed from the property. If the outhouse is filled in, picture shall be provided to the planning department. And again, to cover the mobile homes and the carport, the applicant will need, the applicant will need to receive an approved building permit to track the removal of those structures. And with that, staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's requested appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area. And staff recommends approval with conditions.
Thank you. Questions on this one? Go ahead, Deb.
Is this the one next to Prairie Berry?
It's just down the road, yes.
Okay, it's not the one that's like Prairie Berry if you're going west, you hit Prairie Berry and then this campsite?
This is further to the west. Yep, so Prairie Berry has their own RV site for private use. This is just down the road from that.
Okay. Okay, so the Prairie Berry already has some RV sites. This is a different one?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead. Put the satellite photo up if you will, Jason. I've got a question on that. This one is the one I was speaking of. Yeah, there you go. There, there's a house right smack dab, right there. That's pretty close. I'm just curious, you know, I mean, that's, that's really close to where all this is going to be. That's going to be right in their backyard. So.
So.
Is there any objections?
We have not received any objections.
Fair enough.
They want a camplet, huh?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
You read one comment thing, but it wasn't from the Highway Department. That's a particularly tough drive to get out of right there at the speeds that the vehicles are coming by and the vision. I don't know if we add something in the way of precaution, a stop sign, something like that, that says, because they're gonna be pulling campers out of there. And I can tell you from coming to work even early in the morning that when they pull out from the old, that's the old office for the wood processing across, when a truck pulls out of there with a trailer on it, you're slowing down in a hurry. Just even coming from the way you can see down there with the straightaway, but around the turn's even worse the other way, the Prairie Berry.
Right. I know the request was sent out to South Dakota Department of Transportation and we did not receive any comments back from them.
And we don't per se usually do stop signs, do we? Unless it's really something critical.
Are you talking about a stop sign on 385 or from the driveway?
Yeah, I'm thinking from the driveway to 385 so that people are aware and don't just pull out there because the traffic's moving. You know, 45, I'm gonna say 50 even though it's probably 45 through there. But it's moving 50 mile an hour.
I agree with you, Charlie, but I don't think a stop sign is gonna make it any more precautionous, meaning coming out. Because they're gonna stop to see and.
Maybe some signs, some warning signs, traffic, it's high speed across in front of you, something.
I agree with you on the traffic in that corner, but I don't know how maybe, I don't know, slow speed or something.
Well, I was thinking it's a lot different than the professional drivers that are coming from the other side, which no longer will be coming from there. But it's just a difference, a safety difference. Then the other thing I had, and then I'll go away like a bad headache, was they've done a wonderful job of including something about the fire pits and the fire permits. I wish we had on all of them, but do we need to somewhere put that in our condition so if this gets sold down the road to an out-of-state person that they still understand that we have fire restrictions at these campsites?
Yep, we can certainly add it.
Just something. It's a wonderful paragraph. You could put that exact thing. It's just perfect. It's excellent. Thank you.
Hi.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. I'm just confused about the five cabins in one building. Wouldn't it be more of a bunkhouse? Or it just, does that meet the definition of cabin?
I believe that the way they're gonna separate that out, they'll partition it off. But the applicant is here if you'd like to ask him.
Okay. Water. So, we're always very concerned about the septic and rightfully so. This must have its own well and no issues with water supply? Or are they hooked up to the city of any sort of?
No, they're not hooked up to the city. They'll have a proposed septic system on the property.
But water, they must have their own well?
I'd ask the applicant to come up here and speak to that.
Good morning, sir. If you'd please state your name.
Aaron Olson. So, there is a current well on the property, which I plan to use for the services on, you know, that I'm proposing. And then I am proposing a new wastewater system that's up to code and up to grade. And then the existing systems, which we know some about, we don't know everything about it because they are older. I plan to abandon those to state guidelines.
Chairman.
Go ahead.
Aaron, have you talked to your neighbor that's right by your campsite there? Not that you legally will have to do that in one sense, but.
I guess I didn't just because the notifications were sent out.
Okay.
I was, you know, if there were any conflicts with it.
Not that you're gonna do anything wrong. It's just good to be neighborly and I'll just tell you, you'll serve yourself a lot of less headache later.
Correct.
That they know what's happening in one sense.
Correct.
Yeah. And your drainage in that area is good? Your, is it kind, looks kind of flat from there, but I can't tell?
It's a gradual slope from the upper end of the map towards the highway.
Okay.
It's nothing, I would say, serious. It's just a gradual slope. And so, I, with the septic system, that's how I'm working with the septic. The septic layout is towards Highway 16 there because I can get gravity flow all the way down there easily, so.
Okay. And water, you're not having, are you having a bunkhouse? Or what are you doing for showers, stuff like that?
So, this is, I'm trying to gear this more towards, I don't, like, more of a luxury campground. I don't want to have shower houses. I plan to have, you know, full-service hookup RV sites. So, those individuals won't need a shower house.
Right.
And then the cabins within that building, we can call them cabins. I don't know if it's, whatever title we give it, it is an existing building that's roughly 20 some wide by 80 long. And I plan to put divider walls in there and they'll each have a full bathroom.
Thank you, Aaron.
Does that answer your question about the building, Karen? Further questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
What'd you think of my, about them pulling out there, Aaron? Is there any way you can advise your customers so that they're cautious about that? Especially, most of them are gonna be greenhorns versus the area.
I agree with you. I mean, I don't know. I can come up with some sort of precautionary sign, you know, that I could.
But not a pedestal or something, just as they leave. So, it hits their eye vision is what I'm thinking.
Something making them aware of the cross traffic, just.
It's high speed.
I, yeah. I agree with that corner, you know. Looking down the straightaway, it's not so bad, but that corner coming around from Prairie Berry, you know.
That's the tough one.
I don't think a warning sign is, I think we can put something in there, so.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron.
Further questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir, for coming up and answering the questions.
Thank you.
Is anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this item? Noting none. Staff recommends approval of major planned unit development amendment PU 22-02 with 25 conditions, adding number 26 regarding the fire pits.
Right.
In case it gets sold in the future and the business plan paragraph doesn't carry with the land.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in second for approval. Further discussion? Noting none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries for an item 12.
Item 12 is planned unit development overlay PU 22-04 to allow planned unit development overlay that will allow a specialty resort to include three tent spots, one treehouse with living quarters and a caretaker slash manager's residence. The applicants and landowners are John and Tracy Weeby. Site location is 24174 South Rockerville Road, approximately 0.4 miles north of the intersection of Highway 40 and South Rockerville Road. Property is currently zoned agriculture district. Existing land use is residential. Access is off Rockerville Road and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. Zoning ordinance, section 216 lists the following standards that are, and requirements that shall apply to PUD overlay districts. They're on the screen. I'll read staff's responses. Starting with number one, the uses of the proposed PUD overlay district conform to these uses by right or conditional uses permitted in an agricultural zone district. Number two, the uses of the proposed PUD overlay district are of a type and are located to minimize detrimental influence upon surrounding properties. Number three, the uses of the proposed PUD overlay district meet Pennington County zoning ordinance, section 310, which governs off-street parking. Number four, the proposed PUD overlay district is 10.04 acre. Number five, the proposed PUD overlay district is owned by the applicants, John and Tracy Weeby. Number six, the uses of the proposed PUD overlay district are not designed as to be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare. And number seven will be covered in the next table, which is on the screen for your review. I'll read staff's responses. Starting with number one, the uses of the proposed PUD overlay district are not designed as to be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare. Number two, the uses of the proposed PUD overlay district should not substantially impair or diminish the usage values or enjoyment of other property in the neighborhood for purposes already permitted. Number three, the proposed PUD overlay district should not impede the normal and orderly development or improvement of surrounding properties for the uses permitted in the district. Number four, the applicant is working with the South Dakota Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources and the Planning Department to gain approval of the onsite wastewater treatment system. Access to the property is via U.S. Forest Service easement. No objections were received from the U.S. Forest Service when they were contacted for interdepartmental review. The uses of the proposed PUD overlay district appear to meet Pennington County section, or Pennington County zoning ordinance, section 216. Number five, the applicant will also need, will also need to work through the approach permitting with county highway. And that was noted as part of an interdepartmental review, which I'll get to in a minute. Number six, the uses of the proposed PUD overlay district appears to meet Pennington County zoning ordinance, section 216. And lastly, number seven, future land uses identified as ranchette and suburban residential district. The operation of the proposed specialty resort would take place on the ranchette portion of the property. Therefore, the proposed use is consistent with the adopted county comprehensive plan with an approved PUD overlay. There are two properties being discussed here. The first one is tax ID 2114, which is the larger parcel here. And then you have this smaller parcel here, which is tax ID 42053. That parcel, it looks like it was created because the applicant's drain field goes onto Forest Service property. So, it looks like that's the reason for that lot. But the main parcel, tax ID 2114, contains a single-family residence and a detached garage built in 1974, as well as 13 by 20-foot observation decks, which were permitted through the county. There is also an onsite wastewater treatment system with a valid operating permit. And again, that smaller parcel, tax ID 42053, is vacant minus the drain field. Request was sent out for interdepartmental review. County Highway did have comments stating that an approach permit must be filed with the county highway department, as well as an access easement through the Forest Service if not already obtained. A variance from the Board of Commissioners for the fire escape route must be granted. Anything built within the right-of-way must meet ordinance 14 standards. And what they're talking about there is the applicant has this alternate fire escape route identified on his site plan. So, this is the driveway leading to the applicant's property. They proposed that alternate route so that'll create two approaches off of one lot, which requires variance through county highway. Emergency Services also had a couple of comments. First one stating that it appears the existing physical address is not posted well on South Rockerville Road as required. The second, recommend posting the physical address of the business and the unique tent site number at each tent. There should also be signage from the driveway to direct responders to each tent site. All signs should be reflective for high visibility at night. And we did route this to the U.S. Forest Service and they had their standard list of conditions that came back, but they didn't mention anything about the easement through Forest Service property to get to the subject property. Staff's analysis of the request is that the applicant is requesting a specialty resort to include a caretaker residence, three tents for luxury camping, and one luxury treehouse. And I have pictures of some of the tents that, I believe these are just samples. These aren't actually on the property now. I did include these with your packet. Each canvas tent will measure 13 feet by 16 feet and will be placed on the existing 13-foot by 22-foot raised decks. No plans were provided for the treehouse. Power to the tents will be provided via solar panels and potable water will be provided from the main residence. A communal bathroom will be provided and will have its own onsite wastewater treatment system. The applicant is currently working with the South Dakota Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources to obtain approval for the proposed onsite wastewater treatment system. And approval of that system will be required prior to operation of the specialty resort. With that, staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request as it appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area. And staff recommends approval of PUD overlay 22-04 with conditions.
Thank you, Jason. Questions for staff?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
I've got to ask you, Jason, and I had these hangups years ago when I was on the same panel. When you're looking at a tent in regards to building and using it as housing, specialty resort, you call it one day at a time, a week at a time. How do you review that from electrical and plumbing viewpoint like the state and through our ordinances are set up for building? How can you review a tent?
Well, I believe the septic is going to be from the communal shower house. There won't be any plumbing.
I've got some comments on that too, but.
Run to each one of the tents.
Let's say there's no septic. But there's still gonna be power.
Yeah. They said they're gonna use solar panels to provide electricity. The applicant is here. He probably could elaborate on that a little more.
But I'm saying there has to be wiring. And the wiring's in the walls and the stuff we build and the state requirements. You have an electrical inspector. You have a plumbing inspector.
Right. So, any electrical that they run inside of the cabins, they would require an electrical permit through the state to be inspected.
Mm-hmm.
Which is standard for any building permit in the county.
Issue a permit for a tent?
A building permit would be required, yes.
Further questions?
So, the solar cells, is that a 12 volt or a full 120?
Again, I would have to defer to the applicant to come up and speak on that.
And then when you're looking past a few things and they're describing what all's going on, they're talking about composting toilets and reusing gray water. I mean, that's one of the things you put in there. Is there a composting toilet in this thing?
I put that in.
Yeah. Forest ridge glamping and it goes down through and it talks about.
The business plan.
Yeah.
Right. So, I have the applicant to come up here and speak on that because as far as I know, when I reviewed this, he was proposing to utilize communal, a communal shower and bathroom for all the tents.
We can ask him.
Mr. Chair, just one I forgot.
Go ahead, Charlie.
My usual on-the-fire pits. I did see it. Number 17 just is a general catch-all. I'd like to see that changed to the two that we've been using. Thank you.
Further questions for staff? Okay. Would the applicant please come forward? Go ahead and state your name.
Yes, good morning. My name's John Weeby. I am the owner. First question, at one time I wasn't sure exactly what I wanted to do for the bathrooms. So, I contacted the state over in Pierre and they said that, they gave me some of the options I could use, incinerating toilet, composting toilet. And at that time, I did want a composting toilet. But since then, I went with a bath house. I have an engineer that already got approval from the state. And so, I'm just gonna have one small eight-by-eight bathroom. And it'll have its own septic system. And that's already been approved. I just haven't gone forward with it until this meeting. So, the composting toilets are out.
Okay.
As far as the electrical, it's going to be just 12 volt DC. There's just some LED lights. There's no, under canvas uses these little power packs that gotta be charged. I wanted something that, that would just be LED lighting, low voltage, just 12 volts, one panel, nothing, deep cycle battery, just like, very simple, like you'd have in your car.
Further questions for the applicant? Go ahead, Deb.
Actually, I went up to Keystone and looked at their glamping and it's actually very nice. It's put together nice. It's in with the kind of nature. You have to, some of them you have to look for a little bit. It's not causing, to me, it doesn't look like it's causing a lot of conflict or anything out there. In fact, I don't think most people knew it was even out there. So, I did until I went and looked for some rocks and then I saw that. So, I was like, I'm gonna go look at that. So, it was, it was pretty cool. It's, it fits into the Black Hills and the camping type of situation for tourism. And just like, I'd like to go try it sometime as well, just to see what it's like camping because I don't like, anymore I used to hike in the Big Horns and stuff and I don't like to carry those big pack packs and all that. But I'd like to see the experience. So, I think it's, it's a good idea. So, just based on his process and procedure, it looks like he's following and answering the questions that that would work for that area. So, that also.
Further questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
John, most of mine are in regards to health and safety.
Sure.
And I've had those hangups about tents for a long time. One of the things, the, I believe it's the fire marshal, I don't know which one it is here, Ted. Do you have cell phone service?
I do. Yes, sir, I do.
So, that is covered. He had some concerns about whether one of your tenants could dial 911.
Yeah. All from, all that location, you can text and use cell phone coverage. With most of our larger cell phone companies, 18, or you know, Verizon and Sprint and those, 18 and so forth.
And you're going to have one bathroom? You said eight by eight?
Yes. Yeah. I didn't want it that way. I also wanted to. I also wanted a kind of a luxury, even upscale, under canvas, but the difficulty in the sites, I I have to just go with one, and for simplicity reasons, just go with the one.
For three tents?
Yes.
And one of them's going to be handicapped?
Correct. I want one handicapped, yes, if I can, yeah.
And they're going to have access to the bathroom?
Yes, that's correct.
Even though it's a long ways away?
Well, the handicapped one would not be very far away. The other two would require, yeah.
Oh, you'd put the handicap tent, the closest one to the bathroom?
Absolutely, yeah.
Government does have a purpose in health and safety. I really believe that, always have. And I have some serious questions about being in a tent. May twenty-fourth, two years ago, we had twenty-four inches of snow up in the hills.
Yep.
That's really a big question in my mind when you're putting people up as a tenant in a tent. Pack rats. Pack rats don't need food to even get interested. Anything shiny is going to bring them inside.
Yep.
And they're going to be with you, let alone lightning and the worst hail. If you were in Deadwood a year, be a year, almost two years ago now, when they had totaled out every car, every RV, everything in the area.
Absolutely, we do get.
And these folks are going to have it, and it can happen at night. The lightning can come at night, the hail can come at night, the wind.
Yep.
And these folks are out there.
I don't know, you know, how to address that. I do have, I know that they put hail nets over tents, and that I think is a great idea. You know, the fabric is fairly, as far as it goes back up just to your snow, I mean, they use these outfitter tents up in the mountains, and they can handle a lot of snow. The snow does slide off. Now, I'm sure maybe with a freezing rain or something like that. That's why my season, I just want to keep it short and and during the summer months. So keep it out of the snow season. The lightning and the hail, yeah, absolutely, that's definitely a distinct possibility. I don't know if under canvas, I mean, they've got, I don't know how many tents, hundreds up there, I don't know what they do to prevent that, you know. I think that kind of goes with the the idea that if you're going to go out camping, there's a possibility you're going to get struck by lightning, I guess. And I don't think there's any.
But you're asking them to come camping, and you're going to provide it, and you're not providing a roof over their head.
I'm not.
Is what I'm getting at.
Right.
We have an obligation to make it safe for people.
I agree. I don't know if a guy could put a lightning rod on it, just like you would on a barn. I don't see why you couldn't, you know, but I've never heard of anything like.
You know, even the length, I think you said two hundred feet, two hundred yards to the bathroom, that sort of thing. My wife won't go out twenty feet out of the house with the lighting on because of the number of eyeballs that are looking at her up in the hills where I live.
Right. You're not a candidate, you're not a candidate for my.
Chairman.
I broke down the demographics in my business plan. It's definitely, you know, I'm aiming for the younger crowd that, you know.
I agree, but what I'm seeing is we as a board have an obligation of health and safety.
I agree.
Charlie, maybe I could answer some of that? I had with the tent that was up with, remember the resort that was up there? I had talked to Travis and then a couple other people, trust but verify. The military has those kind of tents, too, by the way.
I was in them for a long time overseas.
Yes, but they're in heat, they're in cold, they're in snow, they're in lightning, they're in dust conditions. Those tents are pretty durable. Travis, not, like I said, not just him, but I asked some of the guys that were in the military, those tents can take a lot before something really happens to those tents, and you should see them, the material on them are pretty thick. Like I said, they have them in the desert, they have them in different places, and Travis had convinced me of that because he's went in the military in different places with those tents, because at first I'm like, whatever, they're not even the same tent, but they are.
Yeah.
And the lightning, that can, that can happen to any of us in our house.
I understand what you're saying, but I, and I don't want to let you think I'm not on the other end of the spectrum.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because I can't even visualize anybody giving you liability insurance. That's how far my.
Right.
Because I wouldn't.
Right.
How can you, how can you guarantee when we're shotgunning nature? And yet, I'm going to provide it to them, and these folks, until something goes wrong, think it's just wonderful. But when it goes wrong, then they're looking for somebody to find that wasn't very bright.
You've been talking to my wife, I can tell. It sounds just like her.
That's where, a pack rat's not a joke.
No, it's not, but I have researched that. Airbnb does encourage this kind of stuff, and they do provide a million dollars of liability. And I want to look even for umbrella insurance on top of that, so absolutely, they.
I should have known Airbnb was in this. I believe in sustainability, and I don't think you need to be in a tent to to meet sustainability things.
Well, this is on the far extreme.
She rocks sustainable, woods sustainable. You can protect these people. Here we've got people that have to build a motel to do it, and you're doing it on a much lesser scale. You're on a wood floor in a tent.
Right, people don't want to necessarily stay in a hotel, especially with COVID. They want to be out in the open where.
But it opens the door to so many other things that we shouldn't be getting into. Now, maybe we should have a motel of these things along the road. Why not?
I don't know. I can't answer that.
This is what I'm saying, we're heading out into areas that I don't think we're thinking ahead, what's coming down the road.
One of the reasons I went with this is I wanted to be able, when I was done with this, not a long-term thing I want to do, but when I'm done with it, I don't want any sign of the decks, the tents, anything. I want my my forest back to the way it looked before, and this is one thing. That's why I didn't want to go with cabins. I don't want foundations, I don't want, I don't want structures all over my my property. I want to be able to return it right back to what it is right now. So that's one of the reasons I went with tents.
And I have to ask you a question, John.
I'm sorry.
I have to ask you a question.
Sure.
You think some twelve- or thirteen-year-old that needs to go two hundred feet down the path to get to the bathroom? And I'm serious. And they see eyeballs reflecting out of the lights that you're providing them to get there. Thank goodness you're providing lights. You don't think they're going to take a leak on your place?
That's okay. I do it every day.
I'm just saying. Yeah. I don't think we should be approving that.
The, you know, the state just tried to do the same thing in Custer State Park, and I think that is probably going to get approved. They're going to do the same thing. They're going to have a campground with a shower house. And in fact, that pushed me toward the shower house because that's what they had decided to do. They broke it down to how many people could use, you know, an eight-stall shower house, and so I used basically their numbers. My engineer also agreed with those numbers. So I think people love camping out in the Custer. I mean, that's what I did when I was a kid.
I think if they bring their own camp stuff and their own camp equipment.
They're trying to get away from that.
The buyer beware.
They want to fly in.
The buyer beware.
Just show up, absolutely.
But instead, we're saying this is fine to provide this, and and I don't see it in conjunction with people coming and traveling and saying that this is good.
I've gone to under canvas quite a few times and bought their overpriced, expensive meals up there at their restaurant many times, and the place is packed. You stand in line, it's a madhouse up there. People love that kind of stuff. And I guess I'm just trying to do a smaller version of that.
Go ahead, Jim.
Just to support you, Charlie, you can tell he was in the construction business. He wasn't a tent maker. So his view of a structure that's safe and comfortable is somewhat different. And I appreciate what he's saying. There's certainly, we have an obligation to exercise deliberation on, you know, good practices regarding the safety and so forth. But, you know, the state of South Dakota collects rental fees for people in campsites. They imply that presumably this is an act or an activity which is reasonably safe. So, and you might be in a somewhat different situation, but it's essentially the same. I, I think it's, you know, really an attractive environment for people who like that kind of experience. And certainly, any reasonable person knows that your security within a fabric structure is going to be marginal compared to a solid structure. And I've impressed by your business plan and how you've approached this, and if it can be done, it can be done by you, I think. So I want to encourage you, but I also want to say Charlie has exercised concerns that are legitimate, but you seem to have addressed or at least thought clearly about most of these.
I think so, and any ideas that I could have to make it safer, like the lightning, is a valid concern. I don't know what happens when lightning strikes it down. Maybe nothing. I don't know. But, I mean, man, if you're getting struck by lightning, you're, that's an unlucky day. I mean, the odds of, I think there's greater threat than lightning even in terms of odds, rattlesnakes, I mean, all kinds of things, so.
I have those.
It's a good point to think about.
Further questions for the applicant before we go to the speaker request forms?
I really like the idea of a treehouse. I think that sounds very interesting.
I'm afraid that the tenting could be maybe a fad, and so I just wanted to throw one extra thing that maybe people haven't thought about, that I would still be able to track maybe a little bit of attention away from under canvas, or if this just becomes something nobody's interested in, but.
I think a treehouse would be cool, too. I think if you did treehouses, I think it'd be really cool, actually.
Nobody has done that yet in the hills that I know of, and so, yeah.
I thought they have some in Custer State Park.
Oh, maybe they do.
Rich?
I believe so.
Okay.
Further questions for the applicant? Okay, we have four speaker request forms. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The first speaker request is from Bobby Johnson.
It's quite disheartening for us to see your excitement as my well is going dry. One of my neighbors had to put in a cistern. So I jumped on Airbnb. That groovy blue blanket, pretty sure he's had reviews since twenty nineteen. The fire pit that's in my backyard, well, let it burn my house down and all my property because you know what? I don't have well water to do it. We're all on private wells. You guys think this is great and good and funny and cute? It's been an operation for three frickin' years. Three years. Is he paying commercial? Is he assessed at commercial and paying commercial property taxes? You guys, it's affecting us. My liability, so they wander onto my property, my dog bites them, guess who gets sued? You know what? I'm without the home. My insurances went up. I just, okay, penalty, let's start with penalty. Is there penalties in place? This has been an operation for three years. I actually thought people were camping on the Forest Service, and they were stupid because you can camp for fourteen days, and they're building a fire, and I thought, send them a, okay. Is it being assessed and paying taxes at commercial? I need answers to these. Hopefully, planning has these. And has there been an environmental impact study? There's a dozen of us that are being affected financially because I don't have the money. I live on a little pittance of a retirement to punch my well lower. I can't afford it. I don't know that any of us are filthy rich or making a thousand dollars a night rent to somebody. I'm sure you'll hear similar. Please consider the twelve of us that are down the hill from them, who are having well issues. Please consider denying this. Thank you.
Next speaker request form I have is from, it's either Don or Dan Janisak. That's okay.
My name's Dan Janisak. My wife Peggy and I live at two four two two zero South Rockville Road, which is right that borders this property. We live down at the bottom of the ridge there, up on top of the ridge. We have some concerns with this. First of all, they've been operating this business for three years without any permits, inspections, or proper approvals, without even coming around to the neighbors and asking, hey, you know, we're thinking about doing this. What do you guys think about this? No word. We didn't even know what was going on until we noticed a lot of activity up there that was unusual. We're small, small business owners ourselves. I'm actually retired from the Rapid City Fire Department Fire Marshal's Office as a lieutenant, so I'm all aware of codes, inspections, fire requirements, safety requirements, and so forth, and I have some concerns with that as well. You know, we're all four small business people. We support them a hundred percent. We're part of that, that family. But you've got to jump through the hoops, and you've got to make sure that your clients are safe, and you've got to make sure that everybody around you is safe and that you're safe in the county as well and in the forest, and none of that had been addressed. It's, to my knowledge, there haven't been inspections or permits up there for health from the Department of Health, or I don't even know, I'm sure that they have a business license, I would hope so, or they're, you know, trouble in the state with that, but that's not any of my business, that's not my concern. We've had noise at night up there from some of their clients, and late at night, not just kind of in the evening, it's been after the ten PM, and their property sits at the top of a very tall ridge in a very rugged area with a very steep canyon wall that drops down our property, all of our properties down below, and it funnels that noise right down into our properties. We have a couple of pets that are miniature donkeys, they're little bitty things, they're about this big. And at night, when there's people up there and they get noisy up there, our little donkeys are kind of sensitive to that, and they get disturbed, and when they're disturbed, they don't sleep well, and it's not good for them. They don't mind the neighbor's dogs barking, actually playing with the neighbor's dogs, but people that they, in areas like that, it's disturbing to them, and it's not comfortable for us. We live there because it's a quiet area and very quiet neighbors, and this is, this is not in line with that. We have had people that have been roaming their property, none that actually so far anyway have come onto ours yet, but they have come down into that area to the backside of our property, and we have concerns with them wandering onto our property and liability issues there, and also contact with our animals is a big liability issue, even though our animals are not allowed up to that fence against their property, they're kept away from that, but that doesn't keep a little kid from going over there to pet the animals, and maybe one of them, these donkeys like to nibble, that's kind of how they show affection, and maybe one of the children get one just a little bit too hard or something. There's been documented cases where people have been sued for large amounts of money over an equine bite, and equine bites aren't dangerous, but they're very painful, and when your little kid is hurt, you're angry and you lash out, excuse me, and that's usually in the form of a lawsuit. And we carry insurance for that, but we prefer not to use that if we don't have to. It's a huge concern for us. Their clients aren't from here. They come in from out of state, maybe even out of country. They don't have the same respect for our forest and maybe even for our property. We had traffic is a concern for us. Their driveway that uses the Forest Service Road to access the South Rockville Road actually comes out on South Rockville Road at a location that's extremely blind. You can't see it, it's at the top of a ridge. It's very difficult, you can't see it until you get right to their stop sign in their driveway there. It's not actually a driveway, but the Forest Service Road approach, until you're right on top of it. So if there's an increase in traffic there, that's an increase in danger, that's a hazard. It's a very hazardous driveway to begin with. It was never put there for the intention to be used as a commercial access. It was put there for access to Forest Service, and they have permission to use that for access to their home. That's okay. But now, when you have, I'm not sure, four groups of people potentially using that property every day, plus their own usage, that's, you know, that's a four hundred percent increase in the property of people going in and out of that intersection and turning across the lane to get in there. It's a very blind intersection, and it's a very dangerous intersection, and I've even come close to to our neighbors coming in and out of that intersection from time to time over the years. That's a huge concern for us. The, they also, in the last, over the last three years that they've been in operation, have exercised open burning there, which is not allowed in the fire protection district without permit. I don't know if they had permits. I haven't found any evidence that they had any permits for those fire or inspections for those, for those campfires. Those campfires require an inspection to be approved before they're even permitted. Those campfires require an inspection to be approved before they're even permitted, and I, I have no idea if they're watching that fire safety. And in our area, as, as you know, anywhere in the hills, that's probably one of our main concerns, is the fire safety, especially as dry as everything's been the last few years. And an excerpt from right off of the Fire Protection District webpage, "Permits are needed for the use of a recreational campfire for the use of ceremonial fire on private property land in the Black Hills Forest Fire Protection District. This applies to both private residential settings and commercial nonprofit, commercial and nonprofit facilities. These permits require a field inspection and must be cited and constructed to certain standards. Missed standards are, are laid out on the website, and there's drawings and everything like that." So that's a big concern for us. And there, the water usage there. As Bobby mentioned, we have water issues. I am the guardian and co-conservator for Mr. Ken Eben, who lives next door to us. His property is right next door to us at 24226 South Rockerville Road, so I represent him as well here. A few years ago, his well was drawn dry. It's, our water table's dropping there already, and had to have a, a cistern put in, a very expensive one, and our own well, we've experienced trouble with. We've had to have the well maintenance personnel come and pull our, our motor out of our well and check it, and we're having some problems with that, and he realized that it was barely below the surface of the water, and when it was originally put in that well, it was about 15 feet below the static level of the waterline. He had to drop it another 10 feet, almost, almost to the bottom of our well, which is not where it's supposed to be. It's supposed to be 10 feet off the bottom of your well at a minimum, and now, if we use too much, it'll start pulling a little bit of mud, so our water table's dropping there. And this usage that has been, their well for, that they're supplying this property with is probably only a couple hundred feet from ours, so we're pulling out of the same water, and increased usage of the water here is a huge concern for us. Those wells were, were not designed for that kind of usage. I don't think the water table can handle it that well, so with the added usage, there's a possibility that, that those of us that are affected may have to have the well deepened, which is a very expensive process. It's about $600 for them just to put the rig in there, and then it's another $50 or $60 per foot to punch the well deeper, plus whatever else they got to do on top of that. Now, a deeper well also requires a larger pump. That's a more expense for us. These are things that, that we shouldn't have to, to saddle for their business. Their business should be able to operate without having any impact on the neighbors, and I, like I said, I'm not against small business, but maybe selecting a property somewhere else more suitable might be a better idea. The septic system up there, I know, is probably originally installed for single-family dwelling that they have. I know you mentioned improvements on the septic system. They show photos on their website. They have an outdoor shower that drains out onto the ground. That's wastewater. That's not permitted. Wastewater has to be processed before it's released, and I know that they're probably gonna, planning on doing some improvements and changing things, but do we know that? How do we know that that's going to happen? With the fact that they've operated this business for the last three years without even asking a neighbor about it, or applying for the proper permits, and not having the proper wastewater treatment for the facilities that they're putting in for these people, with that background, with, with that disregard for the safety and health of our neighbors and their clients, how do we know that they're not going to just continue that? They're just up here, it, once they get the permits, they build their stuff, "Yeah, well, we said we're going to do that, but we're not going to spend that $5,000. We're just kind of, you know, we're, we're going to put a Band-Aid over it." How do we know that that's not going to happen? So we're very concerned about that. We were actually told by the applicants that they didn't plan on continuing their operation, as it was kind of in conversation. So, "Oh, it seems like that's something going on." "Oh, yeah, we have this clamping thing going on." I'm saying, "I said, "Oh, really? You might want to check with the county, because they do require some permits for that." And they said, "Well, we're probably not going to be doing it after this year." This was a conversation that happened last year, and his wife had the same conversation with my wife, and now here they're asking to triple the size of their operation. So that indicates to me that they were being deceptive, that they probably, because this stuff doesn't, this isn't something they came up with in a couple of days. This is something that's, their plan here takes a long time to develop. I know that. I was, I was in the Fire Marshal's office. I see people do those plans, and to talk to the state, and to do all your research. That takes a long time. This plan, this has been in the works for a long time. So, so that concerns me about whether they're actually going to be truthful about what they're going to say, or what they're going to do. We've had incidents of, of fire in that area, quite often, actually. It's a very rugged area, and I looked on the map at his escape route that he had laid out there, and I know you folks probably, you may have been out there, but, but the rest of you folks may not have been out there to see the terrain. That escape route is over a gen, kind of a, a more gentle sloping area of the property. However, it's all very rugged and rocky, and there's a lot of downed trees. So I, I question the fact that that is a safe escape route for handicapped individuals, for small children. I, I just, I have a lot of safety concerns with that as well. So, and this isn't anything personal. We've, we've, they've been great neighbors. We get along with them great. We've, you know, we've watched the fireworks together, and no complaints from them at all, but we are just concerned about the quality of our water, the safety of our water, the safety of our own property, the safety of their clients, and it just, it doesn't make sense to us. We, we, we don't oppose this, and we don't believe that it, that it should be allowed to continue. If they want to start a business like this, I'm all for it. We're, we're actually planning on doing something similar, but not quite the same, but not on our property. We're looking for other property to purchase to start that business, more suitable property that would not have impact to the neighbors and would not have safety and, and health issues. I, I, I know there's probably a ton more things I could say, but I believe that that probably covers most of our concerns. I thank you for allowing me the time to, to come here before you, and hope that you consider my request to deny.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Okay, the next speaker request form I have is from Peggy Janisak. Did I say it correctly?
It's Janisak.
Janisak.
Yeah, dang it.
Well, that's my gimp he has him over there, so. So he brought up a lot of great points and stuff, and first of all, like you said, we've had a good rapport with our neighbor, and everything that, over the years. We've lived there. We're going on 18 years now, and they came in like a year after us, and, and we've known them. Our kids were at the bus stop together, and they, John's wife always let our son like sit in her car and wait, so he'd be warm and stuff down at the bus stop and all that, so we have no issues with the neighbors ourselves. They've been very wonderful and everything. And like my husband said, I'm just going to reiterate a couple of points, that one of the things is the water situation, and like you said, we, we speak for our neighbor as well. My husband, he's the one that's the co-guardian and, and conservator on our neighbors, and his well did go dry a few years ago and did that cistern thing, and we, we need the water, and we have crappy water anyway, and so we have to filter all our water, and we have to go into Keystone in the summertime to bring water to, to water our donkeys, and in the wintertime, we just use the water in our house, because we can't keep it in the container, else it will freeze. So I, we have to buy water just for our donkeys. And so, for one, so we don't take away from our well, but the other thing is, is the water's crappy. I mean, you pour, you do the outside faucet, put it in a cup, and 30 minutes, it's orange. It's completely red-orange, because there's so much iron in it, and the, you know, we're all on the same aquifer, and so, and our son just graduated from the School of Mines, the Geological Engineer. He's studied this, so we know. It's all on this, we're all on the same aquifer. So everybody in this, all 12 of us are all in the same, using all the same aquifer here, so it's being drawn from that, so the ex, the extra use of water is, that they're going to start using, is going to pull from that aquifer, and it's going to, it's going to pull everybody's wells down. And I know this personally from being the small business owner, because I own a business in Keystone. Two wells, and we have nine wells in Keystone. Two of the wells in Keystone have already ran dry, and we've got a third one almost done. We have to limit our water usage every year in Keystone, and sometimes our water doesn't even work in Keystone, and this happens every year, because they have to shut one well down to fix, because it's, something has been wrong with one, to pull off of another one. So there's times I can't even do dishes for half the day or something until they get something fixed, so I know about what happens with the water, and it is not fun. It is, it's a really, really bad situation, and sometimes I've even had to shut my restaurant down because we don't have any water. Thing that my husband didn't mention, we've had increased theft in our area over the past, the last two years has been tremendous, and I'm not saying that's because they have their clamping, clamping going on or anything. It, it could be anybody, but we just have increased theft, and that's, it, it's only going to increase. We don't know who they're bringing in. They're, are they vetting their customers or anything like that? Probably not. They're just like, "Oh, well, you go online, you book it, and they come." We don't know who they are, and again, like my husband said, people can wander onto our property. What we don't want is our animals biting them, and our donkeys are cute, and I'm telling you, people love our donkeys. I've had people pull into my driveway and be like, trying to step out of their vehicle, and they were wanting to, and I'm like, "What are you doing? This is private property. No, you cannot pet my donkeys, because I don't want you to get hurt, because they do like to nibble, and they think they're always going to get a treat when you, you know, go to the fence." And Bobby can, can, you know, she can say, because she gives them treats too, and the minute she comes out, they're right there at the fence waiting for their treats, you know, because Aunt Bobby's there, you know, they're, they're, you know, she spoils them. You do really spoil them. Anyway, so, and little kids, we don't want them to come down and, you know, want them to get hurt or anything, and those donkeys are my life. If I lost, if they bit a child, that would hurt me, but what happens when an animal bites somebody, you have to euthanize them. I got those donkeys because I've lost two of my children. Those are my support animals, and if one of them or both of them had to be put down, I would die. So when I don't want them, so I want somebody to come down and get hurt by my donkeys, because their property right borders, exactly. We are the closest one that borders the property, and I don't want that. I didn't mean to get emotional, but that really, you know, that's important to me. Also, the traffic on the road is extremely dangerous. My husband has driven that road for the 17 years that he worked for the Rapid City Fire Department, and like I said, he did, he's retired now. He actually is officially retired today, and I've run, been run on that road, I can't even tell you how many times. I, I can't even, there's probably hundreds of times, and I've seen so many wrecks on that road, and the, just this, just this year, or it could have been at the end of last year, a boy went through his slick patch on the road and went through our neighbor's yard that my husband's co-guardian of, and, and he's lucky he didn't get hurt. Their daughter hit the same slick spot going to school, and almost, she was sideways like this, and the driver's side like this on Bobby's property, and almost went down onto hers. People don't watch other people on that road. It's a very dangerous road. There's more people walking on that road. I've seen people come out of their drive and been walking down and onto Rockerville Road, and then walking back up. It's not a road you should be walking or jogging on. It's just dangerous. It's just, it's not a good road. And the other thing is, if you all know, that road is where Serenity the Nerd was. We don't know where she went. We have no idea. They have little kids walking and going around. Could that little kid be another one that gets picked up? I don't want that, you know, so. And I know parents should be watching their children and all that kind of stuff, but you don't know, you never know when a child's going to wander off. I know. I've had two, my two boys wandered off when they were one and a half years old, called out of their kips, and got outside, and, you know, because they're smart like that, so you, you just never know. Any child can just wander off, you know, and, and when you're in a forest or whatever, and it might be all beautiful and fancy, and this looks great and all that, and everybody's trying to make money somewhere. I get that, and I, and like my husband said, we do support small businesses. It's, it's fantastic. However, the, their tent, I look at, I can see it from my house. They're looking down on my house, and it's a privacy issue, you know? If I want to stand out on my deck naked, I should have the right to do that, and not that I'm going to do that, because I just, that would just be weird, anyway, but they're looking in my backyard, and I, I like a little bit of my privacy. I, I don't mind the neighbors there and me, but I don't want all of the people that I don't know there and stuff. I get enough of that with my own business. I meet people all the time from all over the world, so I don't need extras, you know, so. Anyway, I think I made enough of my point, and that's all I have to say. Thank you for letting me talk, and I hope you consider everything that we've said about how we want to keep everything safe and keep our, keep our water, and just have a good community where we are. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker request form we have is from Philip Lervod.
Yes, I can guarantee you that everybody that lives below this project is against it. We're all living in suburban down there. We all left Keystone to get out of a tourist town, to get away from the tourists. I, I can guarantee you, those four tents are not up there right now, you know? Are people going to bring their own tents? What size are those tents? Could they be, you know, army tents, set 20 people in them, two people? What, what is the idea there? And the safety is a big, big factor, because we all live in an area down below it. It's just perfect for hiking, and that's what these people who are living in these tents are going to want to do. Get out and walk around in the hills, and we have beautiful rocks that they could climb up and down and all over in our backyards, and we also have the water issue. We also have mountain lions. Bobby over here, he had a mountain lion kill a deer right in our front lawn. We had a mountain lion underneath our deck, and these are all subject to these people that are living up above us. They, they're going to have to deal with all this stuff, and the safety factor is a big one, the fire factor, the water issues. None of us want this. I'm sorry, he's trying to make a, you know, do something constructive for his property, but it interferes with all of us, and there's a lot of us down there, and, and the map you guys had doesn't necessarily depict what, what I think I bought, when I bought my property about 40 years ago. There's supposed to be a Forest Service area behind my property, between my property and his property, because I can see his house from my backyard. I mean, you can just, you know, that's, that's the southwest part of his house. You can see it, and it's just not right. I don't know how he got away with it this long. You guys should have notified us that he implied for a planned unit development. We didn't know that. He's, how long has he had it, you know? Three years? Four years?
He's currently proposing and, and applied for it. There's been notes tonight that, or today, that there's, that things have been going on longer than that, but I can probably speak for the folks on this board that we, we hear a lot of things up here, and, and we will listen to the comments as, as they come in, and we'll work those out with staff. with staff.
Yeah, well, there's a lot of other things I could talk about here that, that the reason it shouldn't exist, you know? I mean, I'm sure those tents aren't there. These pictures of these tents are from somewhere else. They're not his. You know, there's that plant outside of Keystone, there's that under the canvas. Beautiful, beautiful deal. But it's, it brings in thousands of people from all over to, to stay there. But it's way out of town, you know? But you gotta picture, you gotta view Mount Rushmore and a certain area up there. That's what they all want, you know? And the area he's got up there, it's a great, you look out over the hills, it's a good, you know, good viewing area. And I'm sure the tourists will love it, you know? But that's it. We don't want them. You know, we've dealt with them in Keystone for years and years and years. And that's why we moved down where we're at, to get away from all that type of living, you know? Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker request form we have is from, is it Jed Frazier? Jed or Jared?
J.
Jed.
Gerald, yes. J. J. Thank you for listening to us today. I've lived here for over thirty-five years. My well has dried up before. And I'm not gonna touch on the wells anymore or anything like that. But I kinda wish everybody'd look at our concerns on safety. What kind of people is he bringing there to stay overnight? I got grandkids. Who's he gonna have camped up there? Some sex offender? My grandkids run all over that hillside up there. And it's just not my grandkids, it's every one of their grandkids also. I moved down there thirty-five years ago, never ever thinking we'd have a campground. And now we got one. But there's Bobby, the girl that lived up, that spoke first. She's not married. Her daughter's not married. What do we got? A peeping tom showing up? And the next thing, a sex offender jumping inside their place, raping them maybe or something like that? I just wish and I hope you people put your shoes where we're at right now with these people that are coming in there. And theft, yeah. Since that's happened, I've lost a lot of things. But I'm not gonna keep going around with the water and everything else. But I agree one hundred and ten percent what these people have spoke for today. And thank you.
Thank you. With that, I know that there were several questions that got answered. I, that concludes all the speaker request forms. There were some questions that were brought up. And I know at one point, the applicant said that he could speak to some of those items. Sir, I don't know if you wanna come back up and address some of the questions that have been raised?
Did you write some of that stuff down, John?
Yeah, I ran out of room. I had no idea. And I'm sorry, I wish you guys would have talked to me about this. I've talked to you about this many times. But starting out, I guess, with, with as far as the three-year thing. So, this has been a tiny progression all the way up to what it is now or what I want it to be. This was nothing but simply a permitted deck that my wife and I and my kids would sit on and drink coffee. And that's, we've had that for ten years, sitting there looking out on the view. Yes, I did then put a tent on that for my own purpose before even Under Canvas came into town. Our house doesn't cool off at night. I wanted a place to sleep at night when it was hot. That's how it started. So, yes, the, the existence of a tent maybe has been there for possibly three years, but not rented out. Now, I have started renting it out, and that is true. And I, I did talk to my county commissioner about it and completely fessed up to the fact that I am applying. And I did not, honestly, there is some ignorance in whether I needed a permit for this because of some bad information that I have gotten, but also me reading my, the own ordinances and tents not being included. They roll up into something this big and they disappear. So, it was a temporary thing. As far as taxes, all that stuff is paid through Airbnb. So.
Well, John, to stop you, John, over here.
I'm sorry.
So, did you have a business there or did you not? Did you have an Airbnb tax license?
So, right. So, what, how it progressed was, was me, then it was family coming to stay, then my friends would come and stay. Not consistently, just that's how it progressed. And they're like, dude, you gotta, you gotta rent this out. This is great. This is, people pay for this. And so, that's how it progressed. And yes, my taxes are paid.
But did you, did you rent out the tent?
I have. I have, yes.
And you have an Airbnb license?
Yes, I do.
And how long have you had the license?
Probably two years.
Okay.
Yeah. Then, when COVID hit, I lost my job for a year. That's when, when this, I got serious about it. It was my one and only way. It was my only source of income. I'm an airline pilot. I got completely furloughed for a year with no income whatsoever, no unemployment or anything. So, this was my way of paying my mortgage, my rent, my utilities, putting my kids through school, everything. So, that's when I got serious. Now, at the same time, I did go talk to Dan, not making any secret of this. And he's like, hey, you got a permit? I work with, you know, the county and I told them that I did not. And that's the first time that I thought, well, I better go look into this. And that's when I started coming and talking to Jason and Brittany about it. And so, yes, I want to be completely in compliance. As far as some of the safety things that were brought up, let's talk about fire right off the bat, because I think that's the number one thing. My number one concern up there is fire, always. We are at a dead end of a road. That's why I have that fire escape for my kids and my family to escape in case there would be a fire that they couldn't get out. There are no open fires up there. The only time I have a fire, and Dan, you know that, is slash piles, which I get permits right online and burn my slash piles when the snow's the right depth, maybe once a year. Absolutely no open fires, not even from my own family. Do we have open fires? My gosh. We got sparks flying all over. There's no way I'd have an open fire up there. So, I do not burn anything or allow that. And everybody knows that. There's no, no debate on that with anybody that would ever come, including my own family. Water seems to be this really big issue. I guess I have not experienced anything with. My well overflows. I am sorry to say. I, my well's the same spot, but it literally overflows. It's a free-flowing well. So, I think that little bit of usage from three families, and that's one of the things that I encourage was, was very little water usage or being eco-friendly. I'm also not opposed, I have to, I have to get a, a water use permit already from the state. So, I guess they would have the final say. But if my neighbors are concerned about it, I, I would have no problem hauling water, because that's how strongly I feel about how little water gets used. And the way I know that is because my well is on its own utility. It's got its own electric meter. So, I know if it gets used more than what it should. So, but if that is one of their main concerns, I have no problem hauling water, because a few showers for the summer is not gonna kill me to haul that little bit of water. Yes, that road is, is dangerous. I've had two teenager daughters drive on that road since they started driving and, you know? So, I'm always concerned about pulling out on Rockerville Road and worried about them. As far as increasing traffic, they have moved out. I, I don't think that three more cars in the realm of Keystone and traffic on Rockerville is gonna make a huge difference. But, you know, there's bicyclists all over Rockerville. I do not know of my, you know, anybody that walks. I have tons of family and friends that come up and stay with me in the, in the summertime. I don't know, some of that noise is them, yes. We are rowdy. We, we've got ten acres surrounded by forest service. So, I've never ever thought about keeping noise levels to a minimum, I guess, there. So, I, when my people that are staying there, I have never heard noise. So, and as far as wandering, I, I mean, I can't speak for them, but they have also admitted that they've never crossed the property lines or fences. Everything's fenced. Dan's got a wood fence. I mean, it's, they'd have to, they'd have to honestly trespass in order to get over on their property. And I just don't think that's the case there. Let's see. I think that covered most of their complaints. As far as, you know, seeing the tent, I mean, those guys are crowded down there. They're, they're on top of each other down there. I don't think a tent, you know, five hundred, six hundred feet further up the hill part of the, the season would be so intrusive, I guess. Their houses are right on top of each other. So, as far as vetting, the people, they are vetted through Airbnb. They've got a great process of, of, you basically rate people. So, if they've got a bad rating or, you leave a review on every single person. So, if anything at all happens, my, my tent is admittedly not on there. But when I started to decorate that for myself, I wanted a good bed. And I actually ended up starting putting all kinds of antiques and stuff in there. And I've never had one thing missing. So, I mean, if they wanted to steal something from me, they, you know, I doubt they're going down to my neighbors and stealing. That's just not the type of, I mean, we're getting families that are well-off families, you know? I don't think we're getting thieves or rapists or anything like that. Anything else?
Any questions for the applicant? None? Okay. Thank you. You can come up to the lectern and, and speak on the issue, but I'm gonna let you guys ask and answer your own questions between yourselves out in the hallway.
No, when he, he had said he paid his taxes, which we all have to pay our tax, obviously. My question was if it was, if it is commercial, as a commercial enterprise, when you're bringing in revenue, property changes, the use has changed. It's a commercial property. So, are you paying the commercial taxes or are you paying residential?
Airbnb.
Not, not the sales tax. I'm talking assessed tax or property tax.
You know, can you answer that? Help us.
Megan Krueger with the state's attorney's office. That's not an appropriate question for this area. You can talk to the equalization office about that. Thank you.
So, you should be able to find the answer out upstairs?
Well, and I actually have. So, that's, I know that it's not a commercial property. And I wanted to clarify the way the wells, and I'm like, that's awesome that he has his well, the way the aquifer runs. He's the first, then Jeanne checks, then me are all in this area. The one that's dry is right here. And then we continue down. And the other thing I wanted to just get clarification on, the Airbnb reviews began in 2019. So, that's three years. And maybe they're false reviews. But I just wanted to clear you guys to be aware of those issues. Thank you.
Further questions?
Chairman, not really questions, but number one, commercial usually takes less water, if I'm correct, not more water, to be fair. Number two, a lot of people, when they first start doing Airbnbs, he's not the first, that he took him two years, that's even better than, most of the time, that whole time, most people just, even when they find out, they still do it until they get caught. So, I think he was being pretty fair at first, thinking, well, I just, and there's a lot of people doing that. So, number, number three, three tents, he had one tent. Three tents, I believe, is, is, now, if he had tons of tents, I understand that. But three tents, I don't think on ten acres is a lot of disturbance. So, is he, is he general commercial at that point, maybe? But then he has to file, and equalization at this point will know anyway, and they will come assess. So, water issues, again, D A N R is going to make sure that he has enough water, that his septic's are right, his drainage is doing what it's supposed to do, is what we do, depend on disturbances. A lot of the stuff, the, the fire disturbance, the fire things that you were talking about, this also says on this review that it will be reviewed in a year or complaint basis. So, if he's not following those rules and regulations, guys, you can turn him in and that would shut down his operation. So, he's want, he's gonna wanna comply with these rules and regulations that are on there. And he's had a tent for, it sounds like, what, a couple of years? And if he hadn't already tried it, if, I, I went up to, seriously, I went up to the glamping area and there, there wasn't a lot of people there. They had like, I don't know how many tents they had, I think maybe five. I don't even know for sure. Maybe they had more than that. But there wasn't a lot of disturbance, there wasn't a lot of cars, that kind of stuff, which I thought would be, yeah, I thought it would be more stuff or more issues. But I thought, that's why I said it was pretty cool for camping or what they were doing up there. I encourage you to go look at what they're doing up there to kinda see maybe what he's gonna end up doing, John's gonna end up doing. If there was such a, a big issue or, or I saw a lot of, you know, things that they looked like they were making trails everywhere or doing something like that. But I actually thought it was pretty nice. That's why I said that. If he does it right, those disturbances and those things that you guys are talking about will come to pass and you will get that complaint based to the planning commission or planning department. They will shut him down or the health department will shut him down or D A N R will shut him down if he's not following those rules and regulations. That's why he has twenty-five stipulations. I don't know if you guys saw that on his glamping area or his tent area that he's talking about.
Hold on. Let's not go back and forth if, if, do you wanna talk to her?
No, I'm good. But you can pull that up after we're done. And I think you, you would be surprised how much stipulation's on there.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
The packet is online with all of the documentation that this board sees is on the website, as is the, the agenda.
Would you tell them how to find it by chance? Sorry, Rich.
Sure. Go to Google, type in Pendleton County Planning and Zoning or Planning Commission, Pendleton County Planning Commission. Click on 2022, click on Agenda Packet.
Good.
Jason was kinda showing you how to do it. But just so you know, you can pull this up and see every stipulation that way, too. He's not, if he's not complying with those stipulations, then you can do a complaint on John and say, you know, John is not following these rules and regulations.
Further questions for staff on this item? Does anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this item? You wanna speak one more time? Please, please come forward, one at a time.
My name is Deborah Lervag. I'm married to Phil. We live right below his house. And the one thing that I haven't heard much about, I mean, it's all about how it impacts us. But I also have some concerns, because where we live for the last twenty years has been a pathway for mountain lions. This has been going on for twenty years. My daughter, who is forty now, when she was in high school, traveling down that road, she has seen them in high school. One took a deer down in Bobby's front yard a year and a half ago. And I have had them under my deck while I was at home. And I didn't realize what it was. I thought it was a big dog until we went out there and looked at the footprints. These are big mountain lions. And, you know, we are aware of it. People, tourists that come in are unaware. And they even go out and wanna pet buffalo. I think as far as safety concerns, that has to be considered, too. I mean, that's, that is just something that bothers me. And you can't invite strangers in and not let them know that, oh, by the way, you know... you know, if, there are mountain lions in the area. That's my concern, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And one other person wanted to come up, is that correct? Please come forward.
So John had mentioned that he talked to my husband, Dan, yes, he did. He didn't, and Dan just, um, asked him something about the, his camping thing, and, and you heard what my husband said. Um, but he's the one that said, did you get a permit? Have you gotten a permit? No, and he said, well, we may, uh, we might not even be doing it this next year or whatever. And I talked to his wife, John's wife, she said the same thing to me. Then all of a sudden, we all get these letters, and now they wanna add on. So that was kinda like, well, here, throw it in your face. So at that time, he should've said, but we're all, we're doing great or whatever, and we're planning on adding this on. Because these conversations happened recently. This wasn't, this wasn't like, um, a year ago or anything like that. That was just, this was just in the last, you know, few months here. I mean, probably back in, I don't even know, Dan, I think it was maybe a, um, like, the end of last year sometime. So it, it was very recently, it wasn't that long ago. And he addressed the traffic, and then having a few more people and all that kind of stuff. Okay, a few more people going on that road, that road is not patrolled, I will tell you that. I've driven, my husband rode that road every day for five days a week, um, to go to work, and, uh, never seen a patrol car on that road, it is not patrolled, it's a dangerous road. And again, their driveway, the way it comes out, it is, that you, it's like a blind spot coming up there from the hill, and you, if you're coming out of there, you look left, somebody coming up that hill may not see you. And, um, same goes when you, you know, come up the other way, you know, you can barely see their driveway. So it's, it's not, um, I understand people probably can find the place, however, it, it does increase traffic. There has been more traffic on that road in the last two years, um, since, um, this COVID thing or whatever, is it? Because everybody is coming out here because we are a free seat, everybody wants to come out here and visit. I know, I see thousands of people daily in my restaurant, because I have a, I see like a hundred and fifty people in my restaurant. And I'm at the, almost at the base of Mount Rushmore, and everybody's coming in. So I see tourists, and I talk to them almost, you know, almost every day I talk to them. And, um, so they're driving all over, they're everywhere, and they're on that road. It is, again, I'm gonna reiterate, it's a dangerous road, um, and, um, people stealing, people, there are people may not steal, but we're not blaming their people that they're gonna have out there to steal. But people, there's more theft out there. And he also said that he doesn't know of anybody coming down to our property. I've seen kids go down on there. How they got down there, if they went over a fence, whatever, they did. Yes, there's a fence that divides our property, and our donkeys can't get over to that fence. But if you know anything about donkeys, donkeys are some of the smartest animals. And they can lift up one of our panels or do something. We've, we've tried to secure everything, so they can't do that. However, they could get over to the split wall fence where they are, they're not gonna crawl underneath it. Anyway, they're not gonna crawl underneath it, because they're just, they just, because they know. Anyway, um, so when you, um, if they got to that part, the, my donkeys would be still on my property, but a child or somebody would be on their property, and my donkeys may bite them, and I don't want that to happen. And, um, that's what we're trying to prevent. Same with Bobby, Bobby has dogs, and her property borders it, and her dogs can kinda run up on the hillside and do that, too. We don't want dogs to be biting, and those dogs mean everything to her as well. So, um, I could put no trespassing signs or whatever, but a young child is not gonna know how to, maybe that child doesn't, can't read yet, or doesn't know what the signs say or whatever, and, you know, the, the pets look, you know, oh, look at the dog, look at the donkey.
So Ms. Peggy?
Yeah, so.
I think we have, um, some of your concerns, actually the concerns that you're talking about today. And we do have, like I said, twenty-five stipulations that I encourage you to look at, Ms. Peggy, so that way you can see that.
I understand that you love the campground, you've already admitted that you love the campground.
No, I like the process, ma'am, the process and procedure in which he's following, I went through that process.
No, we're gonna, we're gonna go back to, you love that campground. You have sat up here this whole time and been like, you know, if you listen to this and this and this.
Ma'am, don't personally attack me over a campground, I'm not being rude.
You do love this glamping stuff.
Can we just stick to the, to your concerns with this item, period?
I understand, but my problem is, is when you, you're all up here, you should all have be, you should not be biased. You should have, you should be, listen to all of it, and, and encourage me to go do this, that. I have read everything, I don't care. I live there, and he's saying that we're all on top of each other. No, we are not all on top of each other. I have an acre, our neighbor that, um, we're co-conservative in guardianship has an acre. Bobby has at least a couple acres, the people down the road have a few acres here, they have the most.
Mr. Chair, point of order, point of order, we're now getting into personal, and I don't wanna listen to personal.
No, but my point is, my point is, it's a.
It's a point of order, we've heard this, and this is getting personal, and it does not belong in this meeting.
Well, he said that we were all on top of ourselves, and.
It's the chairman that should answer.
I, I need you to speak on specific concerns. Uh, I, we don't wanna do any of the he said, she said stuff. Leave that out, speak to the concerns that you have on this, and not address anybody else. So only the facts associated with, with the issue at hand.
Okay, I do not want people looking in my backyard that I don't know. I don't even like my neighbors looking in my backyard, and I don't want some strangers looking in my backyard. I, I have a place, my home is my safe haven, that is what it is. That's where I come to, to relax, and I don't want people looking over my yard and in my place and disturbing my stuff, keeping me up at night, disturbing my babies, because when my babies are upset, I'm upset, I do not want that. I do not want this, and, and I deal with enough of it with my own business. I don't need to deal with a bunch of other tourists coming down or disturbing me, my peace, when I'm there. And, and that, you think there's enough water for everybody, there isn't. These wells are running dry everywhere, and I don't have thirty thousand, forty thousand dollars to punch my well deeper. So, there you go.
Thank you for your comments. Noting no further discussion, um, staff recommends approval of planned unit development, PU twenty-two dash zero four, with twenty-five conditions. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, before we do that, I'd like to see number seventeen dropped, and add the two conditions that we've been using for the fire pits, uh, which would be number twenty-five and twenty-six.
I'll second that.
So that's it, you approve it, and it's better?
Excuse, we're, yeah, we're, we're past discussion. So I need. I'm gonna move forward. Charlie, the, so you wanted number?
Drop number seventeen.
Drop number seventeen, add twenty-five and twenty-six.
Right, the twenty-five's already there, and we'd have to add condition number twenty-six to use the wording we've been using in past.
Got it. Um, I would also, um, recommend that we review the planned unit development overlay in six months instead of a year.
Second. So he's following the rules and regulations?
Yep, to follow up, make sure that things are in line. Is there any further discussion?
Or complaint based.
I didn't make the motion to.
I know you didn't make the motion yet.
Yes.
You're, you're simply saying that you would recommend that we change these conditions accordingly on the fire and the.
Before we get to the, correct.
Noted.
So the people in the audience know, we are changing it so there's a six-month review instead of a year or complaint-based. And for the fire pit, we've had two different conditions, and John as well, uh, so you know that, okay.
It also says April fifth was another hearing, is that?
So April fifth, um, is the, should be the, um, Board of Commissioners meeting, um, that will hear this item, uh, as well, correct? The, the recommendation from this board will go to the Board of Commissioners, uh, meeting on, on the fifth. So noting that the two recommended changes to the, um, the conditions, the, um, is, staff recommends approval of the planned unit development. Is there a motion, one way or the other?
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion and second for approval. Further discussion amongst the board. Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, no?
No.
Motion carries, we're on item thirteen.
Rich, I have to go to another meeting, I apologize, I did say that I had to leave at twelve, so.
Agenda item thirteen is planned unit development overlay twenty-two dash zero five, to allow planned unit development overlay for recreational resort to include RV spots, a wedding venue, a bed and breakfast, and outdoor recreational activities. The applicant is Angela Lidle, under River County Limited Partnership. Site location is two-two-eight-zero-one Jensen Road, and that is east of Wausau, South Dakota. The request does involve eleven parcels, roughly twenty-three hundred acres. It's currently zoned agriculture district, existing land use is residential and agricultural, access is off Jensen Road, and there is special flood hazard area on the subject property. As I was drafting up the staff report, I did note, uh, many things of concern with this, and I did contact the applicant, and she has requested, uh, to continue planned unit development overlay, twenty-two dash zero five to the March twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two Planning Commission meeting, to address those concerns.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Noting none, staff recommends approval, or excuse me, that this request be continued to the March twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two Planning Commission meeting, uh, is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion and second to continue, further discussion, noting none.
Just one bit for you.
We got you.
Well, it notes, and I'm learning about tents, poor Jason got both the tough ones today. I certainly didn't come well-prepared enough for this newer idea of tents, but now it mentions agritourism in the next one. Is that something else I've gotta look, better be get knowledge done? Is, Jason, that's what I'm asking.
This was a new request for us as well, um, it's commonly referred to as mooch docking.
That's what I thought, it wasn't agritourism.
Right, well.
What is it, what's the?
Called mooch docking, it's more or less where people come and bring their RVs onto somebody's property, don't connect any utilities, don't use any services there, they just park for the night, and then they leave the next day.
Will you spell that out so we can look it up on the internet and get informed?
Mooch docking, M two O's, C H, like docking, yeah.
Oh, like mooch somebody, okay.
Right.
Okay, that's good by me, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Further discussion. Noting none, all those in favor, and again, the, the motion on the floor is to continue this item. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, no. Motion carries. And you're on item fourteen.
Item fourteen is ordinance amendment OA twenty-two dash zero-two for Pennington County to amend section one oh three definitions in section three oh three, multifamily dwellings of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. Um, staff is recommending to continue this to the April eleventh Planning Commission meeting, because it does need to be re-advertised, because section one oh three and section three oh three have to be two separate advertisements and two separate ordinance amendments.
Four twelve, did you say?
I figured you guys would be disappointed after three hours.
Did you say four twelve?
April eleventh.
Eleven?
Yes.
Thank you.
So moved.
Move to continue to April eleventh. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion. Hearing none, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, no. Motion carries, we're on item fif, or excuse me, we're on item, uh, no, we're on fifteen.
Uh, the county board report, the Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendation from the February fourteenth meeting. Uh, there were several items that were continued to the March fifteenth Board of Commissioners meetings. Uh, the ordinance amendments twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, um, that had to do with the efficiency dwellings, and the ordinance amendment for the subdivision regulations. The Board of Commissioners wanted more time to review those ordinance amendments and discuss, uh, the efficiency dwellings, especially in the urban residential district. So they did continue those until tomorrow's meeting.
Were there specific concerns, or did they simply want more time to review them?
They wanted more time to review for this subdivision regulations. Um, under the efficiency dwellings, there was concern about having them in urban residential district as a use by right. So they wanted more time to discuss and look into those. And the others were some concerns with the building code requirements, uh, the international residential code requirements. Um, there has been some comment, um, from public to some of the commissioners that some of those requirements are too strict. So they're looking at maybe amending some of those I R C code requirements.
Uh, noting no members from the public in, uh, in the seats, item seventeen.
Uh, items from staff, uh, we are proposing tomorrow's Board of Commissioner meeting to re-establish the V H R committee, um, to look at vacation home rentals. Uh, staff has been receiving, um, very different requests in relation to vacation home rentals as far as having them in accessory dwellings, um, and having a number of them on their property in addition to, uh, residential structure, uh, single-family residence, whether that falls into bed and breakfast, specialty resorts. Uh, so it's, our ordinance is not clear on some of those requirements. So staff wanted to propose to get the V H R committee together to look at those ordinance requirements, what we're going to suggest, uh, to the board as far as that committee. Is not go line by line in the ordinance, but actually look at concepts, um, like the number of vacation home rentals on a property. Should there be a single, how many single-family residences on the property? Cause what staff gets concerned about is if you have a vacation home rental and a home on a property. If that vacation home rental is no longer utilized as a vacation home rental, now you have two residences on one property, and our ordinance specifically does not allow that. So there's, there's some issues with that, and then there is some concerns that have come up with density, like density in subdivisions, density in areas. So what we are looking at is more of a yes, no, like, should we regulate this and how? And should we, and then go through, and then staff will make those recommended changes in the ordinance, and then propose them to the Planning Commission and to the board.
I think this is the first agenda we've had in a long time that didn't have a vacation home rental on it, in a really long time.
Very much so, usually there's three or four per, um, Planning Commission agenda. So there has been a lot of concerns that have been raised, and because it was done by committee in, historically, um, we felt that bringing the committee back, um, we're looking at a very short timeline, making it a very, you know, short timeline, so it's, you know, six to eight meetings, answer these questions, bring them to the Planning Commission and the board, and then move forward. So that's what we're recommending.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Charlie.
You had Chutima come to me for a few historical things in regard to that, and so you didn't have to look through the catacombs, which I thought was a great idea, and a couple of them were so good, I, I would've said, I think you oughta look at changing them. But, uh, is, are those gonna be on there, too, the ones that Chutima had brought up?
Yes, there's going to be ones that just re-currently come up to you at the Planning Commission meetings, um, that we can incorporate.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Further questions on this item? Noting none, items from the membership?
Oh, I have one more item.
I'm sorry.
The building permit report, that's.
Go ahead.
The building permit report, again, we are at fifteen single-family residences that we issued permits for, for February. Um, we're on track with twenty-twenty-one, um, for the number of permits, and we're actually ahead for single-family residences for twenty-twenty-one. Twenty-twenty-one was probably the most permits our offices issued in a very long time, and the most single-family resident permit that we have issued historically, at least in the past five years. So we're on pace to be similar to twenty-twenty-one again, for growth, so.
So numbers only, because it looks like valuations, you're way over.
Yes, and actually, when, when we look at our valuations, we either do by bid price or by the ICC, and the ICC cost per square footage went up like twenty-five dollars a square foot. So when you calculate that, and we're still very low as far as what things are actually selling for.
Yeah, I was gonna say, what's the, what's the ICC number?
It's like a hundred and fifty.
It's like $154 a square foot.
Yeah, you're low.
Very.
Yeah.
But we had to have some kind of measuring stick for, without a bid, so.
Questions on the billing permit or building report?
Okay. I have a question. And I stated it a few times this afternoon or this morning with regards to water. And I believe that I remember what the law says, or I should say the well drilling. My well goes dry, my neighbor's well doesn't go dry, these types of things. How does the Department of Agricultural and Natural Resources deal with those issues?
I do know that from a water right perspective, they look at personal drinking water wells as like priority over commercial, like permitted water rights. Whether or not these types of uses require water rights, that was a question that I had talked to Jason about that I think we're going to have to touch base with D A and R to see if they're going to start requiring water rights for these types of uses because it's getting over. I know they have that 18 gallons per minute, one well. It may fall under that. I don't know. But I do know that like individual wells on residential property are priority over commercially issued water rights. And then they have different priorities depending on time.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
But the exception is shallow wells.
If they do go dry.
Yeah, they don't. To my knowledge, when, when I worked with them, they gave no priority to shallow well for domestic use.
Well, domestic use, like one well, that has priority over any kind of commercially issued water, right? But as far as where they are in relation to each other is the question.
I didn't know they ever change it, but a shallow well is not a protected well. I understand that. Would you check that, see if it's changed?
Absolutely.
And I guess I would. And a single point source is not even, doesn't even have to be a permitted well. Is that correct?
They do have, the well drillers do get a permit when they do go out and do new water wells for individual homes. They can only do 18 gallons per minute if they get over that. There's some.
But a water right does not go with that 18 gallons.
That is correct.
Is where I was going, and we've, I'm not going to talk about any issues. In general terms, once you get into the crystalline core of the, of the Black Hills, as they refer to it, and everyone is in the shallow alluvial aquifers, really the guy with the deepest hole in that aquifer is, is going to have water compared to his neighbors, unless that entire aquifer dries up. And we've had several instances in the past where either that, that has been, the water quality's gone down due to livestock upstream in the hills. I mean, you name it, there's been all kinds of numerous things. But I see this as an issue that is going to continue to become more and more important in these scenarios. But I think that maybe a refresher of water wells to the board here and specifically to the private ones, not, I'm not talking someone, you know, pokes a hole 800 feet in the ground and they're in Minnaloosa, Madison, Deadwood, all the other, Minnacotta, all those, all those aquifers, I don't know if we need that. But would that help? Because I, I was sitting here listening to the various things, and I knew that these things were going to be coming up. And I thought it would be good to have an update on that.
Staff can check. And we do have a staff member that previously worked in that department in D A and R.
Okay.
So we can touch base with that individual and then with D A and R.
Even if it's just pointing us via email into, hey, this is, this is what you should read real quick to get up to speed. I think that that would, that would go a long ways to help update.
Okay.
Anything else?
Collude one more request. You know, you hear the phrase, and we heard it today again, free state. That we've got these people, folks buying here with every right and have property rights. They come here, new folks that aren't familiar with our area. We're seeing more and more baggage come with that. The free state, in other words, they're leaving one supposedly that's not free. We're coming to free, and now we've got these new type of requests coming. Are you seeing pressure in other areas, other than just property use?
What do you mean?
I mean like the, well, we looked at the one subdividing today. Now, that was just a normal one. Why not sell off some if you buy one or you pay too much? Sell off some. The tents was an example. That's where the free state comment came. That sort of thing. Are we seeing a lot of new, especially since you're talking about vacation home rentals? That's another way of paying your, your debt to the bank. If you've got a mortgage on it, is make sure you got it, got it being used when they're not there. Is this something that's going to, what would I say, kind of exacerbate?
Continue, yes. The accessory dwelling units, the having rental properties, whether it's long-term or short-term, housing options, housing choices, just because of the affordability factor. A lot of people want to do the VRBOs or the long-term rentals to be able to continue to pay for their property. Last year, we had double the number of plots that we have had in the last five years. So if that gets you any idea of how many people are subdividing property and selling off portions of property.
I hear you say efficiency dwellings, meaning the use of them and where?
Right, the tiny homes, those types of requests. You know, it just comes down to the affordability of property in the area. That's what we hear the most as far as the VRBOs and renting out is to be able to afford the property that they have to continue to afford. It's like a supplemental income.
Better get rid of the old geezers.
Better get what?
We better make sure we get rid of old geezers in positions like this. Because that's tough. You know it's tough. You guys are younger.
The young geezers don't have time.
But it's difficult listening to people that you had today. We had numerous people stood up to 35, 40 years in a particular spot. And now they're having to think through a new venture, let's call it that. It's difficult for even someone sitting here with the assignment of doing their vote. Right or wrong? Pass the amendment? Don't pass the amendment. Deny it. And I'm saying some of these things really come out of left field. To me, at my age, I'm going. Remember Louis Black? I don't want to say what, you know, that's the way they hit you. So that's, that's the only reason I bring that up. I do not believe the general public realizes this. They sit up there, they don't call it up on their, their, their computer and play it. And this is creeping up to get to be good size, where we have a small element of new residents, citizens that are greatly affecting the thoughts and positions of our ordinances and those people that have lived here a long time. That's all I'm having.
Yeah.
I'll leave and go with that.
We are definitely seeing more creative uses of property.
Creative, good word, good word, Rich. I'm glad I asked it. Good word. I didn't think of that word. It used to be creative financing. Now we got creative use of property. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Last item is adjournment. Is there a motion?
Move to adjourn. I'll second that.
Motion and second, further discussion? Noting none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.